Start the meeting by nominating and selecting someone to serve as chair pro tem.
Okay, with that, we're gonna get started. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. The first thing we need to do is approve the agenda from our last meeting. I assume everybody's had an opportunity to look at those minutes.
Move that we approve them?
That approve the agenda.
He's making, yeah, he made a motion.
I second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, seeing we don't have any administrative.
Should we approve the minutes?
Oh, yeah, we do.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as listed.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Will you pull your mic down?
I'm a quiet person.
All right, we don't have any administrative items for administrative session, so we'll move to the legislative session. The first agenda item is the Springville Public Works request recommendation on the approval of the sewer collection master plan. At you, Brad. Okay, you're up.
Thank you. It's good to be here. First, I want to introduce, I've got two assistants and they're over different areas in Public Works. Jake Nostrom, he's over water, wastewater collection and stormwater collection in Public Works. Jeff is over streets, solid waste, and the wastewater treatment plant. So they're very busy men. Lot going on.
Thank you.
So we were here a little while ago and we talked about. The reason why I question it is because we have six different master plans and they go through three different commissions or boards or councils. So there's eighteen different things, meetings we're going to and they're all in different places. So let's get started on this. Tonight, we're gonna talk about the wastewater collection and the water reclamation facility master plans. So the water reclamation facility is the wastewater treatment plant. That's just a different name that we use for it. And so some of you, I don't know if you were in the previous one that we gave, but I'm just gonna kinda go back over why we have master plans and so forth, just to give you an idea. One of the most critical things we do is we establish a level of service. And that level of service, whatever we establish, is what guides us through the master plan process. It dictates size of pipes or the way the plant works or whatever. And so in this case, we establish levels of service. We look at growth because part of the master plan needs to look forward and see what's going on in the future. So we look at that and we quantify the system assets that we have. The pipelines in the ground, the sewer pumping stations, and in this case, also the wastewater treatment plant itself. And then from that, we gather flow data, especially in the collection system out there in all the streets, to make sure to see what's happening in the flow in the system itself. And then we run a hydraulic model. And from that, we can formulate the capital projects, the things that we need to do. And those projects can be deficiencies in the system where we might have a pipeline that's too small. It also can tell us what we're gonna need in the future with growth. So there's two different components in that. So first, we're gonna talk about the collection system master plan. So this is our, just an overview, and I know you really don't need to see this in the sense that we've got pipelines from four to thirty-six inches in diameter in the sewer system. And one of the things in establishing that level of service is we have to know how much sewage is produced per day per household. And we actually, in the study, I think we came out to about two-hundred-and-thirty-two-ish, based on the modeling that we did and the flows. We're using two-hundred-and-fifty gallons per day per residence, which is pretty standard for the state. One of the things that to understand, and this is different than a stormwater system, is we don't run our pipes full. At about seventy-five percent capacity, or seventy-five percent full, that's about the highest capacity you can get in a pipe. Because once you start filling it more, it starts dragging along the top of the pipe too, and you actually get less flow. So we have about diameter to depth, or depth-to-diameter ratio of about point seven-five. And then the state requirements are eight inches. And I just told you, we have some that are four, not very many, but those are more or less grandfathered in and service smaller areas. So they don't have to be as large. So we have to look at the growth. How are we gonna grow? And we look at the population growth over time. We use the MAC model in that to help us in mountainous association of governments. So we're expecting over the next ten years about three-hundred, three-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty equivalent residential units. So what do we have in the system? We have a hundred-and-thirty-five miles of gravity pipeline, anywhere from four to thirty-six inches in diameter. Twelve sewer pumping stations, and they're scattered throughout the town. You can kinda see them. There are the green dots in here that are all over the place.
So are those lift stations?
Yes, they're sewer lift stations. So what they'll do is they'll have a force main and they pump through that gets to the nearest gravity line. It'll dump into that and then gravity.
Then it's gravity from there, so just a lift station.
Mm-hmm. So it's lifting it to, until it can get to a place where gravity's in. There, for example, Canyon Road, you drop down in a kind of a low spot, right before you go start up in the canyon and you can turn off the Bartholomew Pond. In that low spot in that road cut there, there's a lift station there that pumps up. Very small one, but there's one there. About twenty-seven-hundred manholes. It's a lot of manholes to check and to make sure are okay. So one of the first things we do is we do flow study locations and we determine, I'm gonna go back, I wanted to just point something out here. Is that when we do flow studies, we actually look at what we call drainage basins in the sewer collection system. And so we put these meters in the sewer itself in strategic places where we know there's an area that's draining to it, so we can tell what the flow is in that area. And so it's not like we're checking every single pipe. We're checking these areas to give us a good understanding of what's going on in the system. One of the things we find is that we actually have groundwater that's seeping into the system. This is not good. Because we have to treat that groundwater when it gets to the plant. And from this, we have about four-hundred-thousand gallons per day of groundwater that's getting in. Now, that's a task that Jake needs to work on with his people to cut that out. And so we look at what we call this infiltration. There's also something else called inflow. And that is when we have sustained storms, when it rains. What happens? What's getting in the system quickly? And in this case, you can see that this rain event happens here and all of a sudden, we spike. So we know that water's getting in somewhere, maybe through an open manhole or through some area. And so we also, we have temporary meters that we go put in when there's rain events coming and we can try to find those and backtrack them up. But right now, we can get up to two million gallons a day in sustained storms. That's a lot of water. So once we get those flow amounts and so forth, we can start running a hydraulic model. And that model allows us to determine the proper sizing of pipelines, what size of lift stations we need, and also what the wastewater treatment plant is gonna need to handle. And so, for example, most of you know this, but when do you think the highest time of flow is in a day for sewage?
In the morning.
In the morning. You can see that right there. Residential, the blue line. Mixed use would be commercial and residential. And in the morning, we have a lot of flow coming at us. It comes and hits us pretty hard. Industrial is a little bit later when people get to work and start doing things where they're working. And then there's an evening peak also that's not as high in the residential around eight o'clock. So we call that the Diurno curve. So when we put the model together, we have certain nodes that we use. And that way, we can start running this model to see what happens in the system based on these flows and where they're coming from. So when we get this model going, it can tell us where we have a place where the pipeline may not be big enough to carry the flow that's coming at it. And so these are some of the projects that we've identified that are areas where we need to watch because, based on the model, they're getting really close to the pipeline capacity.
What street is E4 on? Back to your thing there. Is that Fourth North?
That's, no, that's gonna be a thousand north. Yeah, so that's right there where you cross at the IPA yard, rail yard.
Oh, it's west.
Is it a thousand north? Yeah. Yeah.
Right below Mike Cloggs subdivision.
This is the regional park. If you can see my cursor, you come up and you wind through. Community Park is right here. And then you cross the tracks here at IPA and you can head off. So that's one of the, one of the places where they're identifying existing deficiency.
I had a question. How long have you been keeping data on this?
Quite a while.
And is it backwards compatible? I mean, does it make sense what you're seeing for the future prediction? Does it, does it line up?
It does. Some of these, now, remember that some of these deficiencies are just kind of a watch. Doesn't mean that we have to go and fix them right off. So I've been here twenty years and we've had others that we fixed and gone forward with. And these will be in our capital project list. It's one of the assignments that we have is to get those in, to get those fixed. So then we look also out in the future. What are the things we're gonna need in the future when growth comes in? Most of these projects are from these people called Lakeside. I'm not sure who they are, but. Yeah. Anyway, they're taking care of, we're looking at those. We're actually gonna be modifying a little bit based on the projects they're gonna be putting in. And these lines are basically, when you get to future, you kinda say where you think they might be. They're not exact where they are. Okay?
Can I ask you one more question? I'm just curious. Does everything flow into our treatment station or is there a shared portion with Spanish Fork?
We have no shared whatsoever. In fact, we actually take about two or three houses from Spanish Fork, or from Mapleton into our system.
I'm just curious, yeah.
Yeah, we do not, we don't have anything to do with the Spanish Fork wastewater collection system. So just to give you an idea, when we have these projects, and this is a growth-related project, and it's F3, and if you look back, we'll just go backwards here if I can get it to go backwards. So F3 is this small area right here, and they've identified this pipeline project. And so what we do is we look at that project, and what it is, is it's upsizing a twelve, an eight-inch to a twelve-inch pipe. Now, the interesting thing on this, and we do this with everything that we look both in future and existing deficiencies, if there's any. But if there's, if there's a pipeline that has excess capacity that growth can use, then we can use that in the impact fee. And in this case, this pipeline project, two-hundred-and-ten-thousand, thirty percent of it can go towards growth because going from eight to twelve, you're adding capacity that growth can use in that pipeline. Does that make sense? Some of them are a hundred percent, others are not. So for each project that we have, all those F projects that we showed you, there's a, there's a project for the city itself, that the city will use, the existing city. And there might be a part that growth is using, or it might be a part where growth is using the whole pipeline. And you'd see a lot of that, if I go backwards here, where you're out here where there's nothing right now, right? So most of that pipeline, all that pipeline is gonna be due to growth. So that's just one project, just to give you an idea of how we go through and look at these. We do this for every single project in the plan itself. So that's the collection system master plan. Do you have any questions on the collection system? Because I'm gonna move into the treatment plant now.
Is there any plan for putting additional in the future, like an additional treatment plan? Or everything's gonna flow in that direction where we're at now?
So we'll talk about that in this next section. No, that's fine. That's a good question. So we have a plant. It's been there for, I guess we started pre-nineteen fifty-five. And there's been quite a few upgrades and additions and so forth. The latest one was just this last year, we did some phosphorus removal upgrades based on state requirements that changed. But the first thing we do again with the wastewater plant master plan is we establish the level of service. Again, we're looking at two-hundred-and-fifty gallons per day peak flow, an equivalent residential unit of about two-point-three people per unit. Okay? And this is where it gets really technical, but this is what we have to do at the plant. So we look at biological oxygen demand. It's what we call the strength of sewage. So for a normal household, this is what a normal household would produce. It's not the amount of water, it's what's in the water, okay? We have total suspended solids. Those are a measurement of organic and inorganic solids in the sewage. We have nitrogen, again, organic nitrogen and ammonia that we would need to be taking out. And we also have phosphorus, which is the latest regulation the state just put on us statewide. And so these numbers here are typical of a residence, the strength of sewage that they give to us. If it's a business that gives stronger sewage, maybe more BOD, more suspended solids or whatever, they are also charged for that extra sewage because we've gotta take it out at the plant, right? So this is our level of service here for that. Anything above that, if you're a commercial business, then you would have to pay a surcharge extra. And we look at growth, ERUs, and this is in the case we just looked twenty years ahead for the plant. Nestle, Stouffer's, whichever you wanna call it, same thing, they use about three-thousand-four-hundred ERUs. Meaning, what they give, what they send to the plant is the equivalent of thirty-four-hundred houses. They do a lot of stuff a day. And we quantify the assets that we have. What is, what will the facility do? So the average daily flow that we typically, the plants decide for is six-point-six million. We get about three-and-a-half million gallons per day right now, average flow. So there's still capacity in the plant. We can go up to nine-point-three million gallons a day for a peak hour. So where do we discharge? We go to Little Spring Creek. If you know where the Pepsi building is out there, there's an opening where the creek comes out. That's where effluent comes out, is right there. And it goes down, winds through, and the ducks play in it and so forth. So, I do not expect you to read this. Basically, this is a flow diagram of what we do. And in simplicity, part of it, wastewater comes into the plant, it goes through what we call a grit chamber. That's where we drop the, we grab rags and other things. They go through a screen, they get pulled out. Then it goes through a chamber that is flowing bubbles up. You can't swim in bubbles, okay? So all the sand and everything drops out, and that gets sent off to sledge processing. And we put it into clarifiers, which are just those big round tanks, and more of the solids settle out. And there's a place at the slope bottom, that's this area here, the clarifiers. In fact, I'm probably going backwards here. Let me make sure I'm in the right place. Yeah, I'm all right. Anyway, so from the clarifiers, we pull more solids out, and then we run that into a pumping station and put it up into trickling filters where it's sprayed into media and it filters down through. The plant is a living organism. It's alive. We use bugs to process the sewage. So we have to be really careful because they're really picky about temperature and all different kinds of things. So we don't let stuff go into it that's gonna kill the bugs. It can be really bad. So anyway, we go through different processes, pulling out the solids in different processes and sending the solids to what we call anaerobic digesters, where we have bacteria that like to work in a non-oxygen environment, or less oxygen. And they break down the solids. The rest of the flow keeps going through and as more stuff settles out, the water gets cleaner and cleaner. We run it through sand filters, and then we chlorinate it and send it out as effluent. The sludge, the sewage is processed in the anaerobic digesters. Then it's moved over to a belt press where all the water's squeezed out as much as we can. It goes out on the ground, we mix it with green waste and sell it. After we've done the processing, we sell it as compost. So that's kind of an overview of the plant. Any questions on that? We're gonna keep going if not.
Do you have any drying beds or they just?
We have drying beds, but we typically don't use them unless we use them because we're taking one of the components down. And we can put that into the drying beds and let it dry out, or we can return it back into the, into the works.
But you do have drying beds if something else goes out that you utilize if you had to.
Yes, we do.
That's great.
So for the most part, when we gather that flow data, we wanna see what's happening, how far in the future the plant can go. And so we look at all the different things, the loadings and the different things for peak flow and the BOD loading, total suspended solids, all of that. And we see what the plant can actually do, where the weak links might be in any of the different systems. So what we've gone through is, the consultant with our staff have gone through and we've looked at, okay, what do we need to do? What are the things in the, in the plant right now, perhaps that need to be maintenance things? How much capacity do we have in each different type of treatment process? And so right now, we're calling these in two different phases. This is a phase one. And so right now, between the first and the next two years, we're looking at about seven-point-one million dollars worth of projects that we can do. Now, we've already got one-point-five million of that right now in today's budget, and the guys are already working on the headworks in here. And also some other things, I think the biogas handling and so forth, some piping. So this is one thing that we're gonna be doing fairly quickly. And then, three to six years out, we'll be doing some more work here. The digesters, that's the anaerobic digesters. We already are doing the standby generators with the power department right now. So even though it shows up in three to six years, because the power department did some things with the whitehead, they used to be our backup power, now we need our own backup power. Because switching over on black starts from when they start their generators to get to our plant is a lot more difficult. And I don't understand that. It's electrical engineering. I'm a civil engineer. But that's more or less what's happening there. So we have some projects that we need to do. Any questions? We'll keep moving. Phase two is way out. That's in by twenty-thirty-five. And phase two may not happen the way it's shown here. What we're doing over the next six to ten years is we're looking, we're looking at the plant as we do these maintenance things and so forth. If we can keep the plant going and it's doing a good job, then we're gonna keep it going. We're also watching the state regs. I'm on the commission for the Utah Lake study. And they might come out with stiffer regs on phosphorus and nitrogen removal. And depending on what those regs say, depends on what our plant's gonna need to do. We can do the one-milligram-per-liter phosphorus right now with chemical addition. But if they make the plants go lower than that, then we have to go to a different type of process. So we'd have to put that in.
What do you think the chances of that happening?
I don't know.
Isn't that what's causing the algae bloom? Or is that what they think it is? Sorry, maybe I don't wanna sidetrack you.
Well, no, that's, it's a good question. If you're a treatment plant, we say no because the studies show that when the wind blows off the desert, you get a lot of phosphorus that just blows into the lake and causes that too. And also, there's other processes in the lake itself that are causing issues. It's really complicated. In fact, they have a science panel from all over the world that's doing this.
I was just curious what the, what the wind, no pun intended.
Yeah, what the winds say.
What the winds blowing as far as telling you, are we needing to plan for that now?
The treatment plants, the publicly-owned treatment works, we're all very heavily involved. Agriculture's involved, recreation is involved. There's a lot of things going on. My guess in the next two to three years, we'll know kind of the direction we're going. But the state's also realizing that if they set the limits so low and it costs every plant to go ninety million dollars to make this, what are the citizens gonna do, right? So they gotta balance that. It's a tough issue.
Well, it's good you're on the board. I was just curious how that was.
Yeah, it's been an interesting thing. So in summary, the water reclamation facility, the plant itself, has sufficient hydraulic and biological capacity to meet current permit requirements for about fifteen years. Now, there are those maintenance things that we need to keep up on, right? Phase two incorporates biological nutrient removal, BNR is what they call it. We may not go in that direction. It depends on what the state regs have us do and other technologies that we're looking at out there. So that's kinda where we are on that. So as we get to the impact fee part of it, the part that's growth, right? We look at this and we wanna separate the deficiencies that are currently in the system from the growth-related costs. And we also pull out, if we have excess capacity in the system that growth is going to use, we can pull that portion out and also put that into the impact fee. Does that make sense? And so what we've done is we've gone through and done that. For example, in the phase one upgrades, for example, the headworks that we're doing work on, about nine-hundred-and-ninety-thousand is impact fee eligible for that project. And then also the standby generator and the sludge de-watering upgrades that we're doing, squeezing out the water out of the sludge. And so right there, you've got about one-point-seven million dollars that is impact fee available for that. So right now, what we're looking at is, we're looking at those future things that we're doing. And then we go back and say, okay, what about the initial plant? Is there any capacity left that growth could use? And back in the original plant, there's about two-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty-four ERUs of capacity that's still available from the plant, from pre-what we call twenty-ten. And then the two-thousand-ten upgrades that we did, there's about another six million dollars available. And then from the post, which we just had to do because of the state with the regs, there's about another half a million dollars. And so from that, there's also from past improvements, there's that much, there's that much available capacity that growth can use in the plant, and that's really critical too. So I wanted to go through, this is the slide I put in that I didn't have in this one because I realized that some of you hadn't seen the previous, the previous discussion we had on water and pressurized irrigation, right? But the critical thing when you're doing impact fees is you've gotta make sure you're separating out the growth-related costs from existing system deficiencies. You have to do that. And Utah Law says growth pays for itself and nothing more. So separating those is very critical that we do that. And the deficiencies are gonna be paid by the ratepayers, the people that are already here, if we have deficiencies in the system. And so to me, that's kind of a balance, right? The ratepayers are paying for deficiencies. New growth is gonna be paying for itself and we keep those separate.
Can I ask you a quick question? So when you say system deficiencies, that would include like repairs?
Yeah, no maintenance at all.
It's not that the system's deficient, it's just that the citizens are paying to continue to repair, just like do on their homes and everything else.
Right, but also there were those, those E projects that we had pipes.
Right, I'm just.
A little bit smaller, but you're correct.
I was just trying to clarify that it wasn't that the system isn't there, it's that it's gonna have to be maintained on a constant basis.
Right.
That's what that is part of, right?
And I, and I think I might have the maximum, so what we do is we take, what's the maximum allowable amount that we can charge as an impact fee? So you take those, those buying capacity, the growth-related projects, the cost of all those, and you divide it by the number of equivalent residential units that growth can, can use, right? And so right now, and I think this number may have been changed just a little bit, but again, we're giving you a general number. As we get to the council, we'll have down to the dollars and cents. But this is the maximum allowable fee, and what that means is, is that the city council can, according to Utah state law, if we've done all this correctly, they can charge that amount for equivalent residential unit, right? And that is our recommendation. Now, you think about it, if you're on the council and developers are saying, well, we don't wanna pay all that impact fee. So what happens if you shift those costs? What if, what if you don't charge the maximum amount that's, that's available by law, the allowable amount? And so looking at this, this balance here, if you go through and you pull away the growth component, it's gotta go somewhere. And it comes to the other side because the project costs what it costs. And what you get is an imbalance, and that's something we don't wanna have. And so I wanted to make sure that everybody understood that that's the way we look at it. Is that that's why Public Works is saying we wanna do the maximum allowable fee. And so how do we compare with other people on these fees? Our wastewater, and this is why I didn't think that number was correct. Our wastewater is two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-six is what we're proposing per ERU. Right now, we're at seventeen-sixteen, okay?
So it's not the thirty-seven?
No. That, that actually, that's an old part of the slide that I didn't catch that was layered in, and that's when I saw it. So it is two-eight-eight-six is the actual. And so that's, that's where we compare with other cities. Now, you notice some are really high. They're members of Tempanogus Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant, which is very expensive to go into. So if you're in Highland or Vineyard and going into that, they're really high. Payson just built their own plant, very expensive also, an upgrade to it. And so we're still really low on our impact fees because we're looking at our plant, we're keeping it going, it's functioning well, we're meeting the requirements and so forth. So an overall picture, and I gave this last time, and every, every time I give a presentation, I give this. These are basically the numbers we have today on what we're looking at, all the different master plans. Now, this is water and secondary water, but we combined them here. So this is what we're looking at right here. So we're looking at two-eight-eight-six-point-one-five. How does that, how does that look compared to the county average? And how does it look compared to what we were charging before? So it's a sixty-eight percent increase from what we were charging before. But again, this is new growth cost, right? And we're finding the projects we're doing are close to double or more than double than they were just a few years ago for the same project. Instruction has really gotten out of hand. And as we update these, we have to update the project numbers, and it comes in like this. So what we're looking at tonight from the planning commission is this green line right here. Is we would like to propose the maximum allowable two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars.
That's the maximum you can do, right?
That's the maximum we can do.
Because the state regulates you, you cannot do any of the other shift.
Nope.
Okay.
That's the balance thing I showed you.
Yeah.
Right on balance.
I understand. Just clarifying. I understand. I'm just clarifying.
I was just going to ask, what's the counterargument? And what, what, what do people who would disagree with you, you know, who take the other slant?
Mean, move some of that cost to the payers?
Yeah, how would they view it?
So one of the things that I've heard, and, and it has some, some good thought processes, growth, growth helps an existing community. Like if we were, you know where Summit, Utah is, down by Cedar City? If we were Summit, Utah, that's where my grandparents are from. They'd never get a Walmart there, would they? There's like 25 houses.
You have to have a few more exits.
Right. And so do you see what I'm saying is growth does bring things that help the existing community? And that's one of the arguments that I've heard. But again, I think that's a benefit to the community. But it's also a benefit to the developers that are bringing people in because now they have a place to shop. We didn't used to have a Smiths, right? When I got here 20 years ago, we had a two lane road on Four South. And now we have a Smiths.
Forty-four percent below the county average, you're a bargain.
We're a bargain.
You're totally a bargain. I do that all the time, so that's why I'm acknowledging the fact of thanks for doing such a good job because that does encourage growth. Forty-four percent's a good, it's a good deal.
So any more questions? I'm at the end of my presentation.
Okay.
So what I'm looking for is a recommendation from the planning commission. If you agree for the maximum allowable amount of $2,886. If you disagree, then we'll log that too. And we, we tell them what the votes were and so forth.
Okay. We have to open a public hearing. All right, so we'll open a public.
Thank you, by the way.
Thank you so much. We'll open a public hearing with the impact fees for the sewer collection master plan. If any of you want to come forward, please tell us your name and your address.
I don't see anybody coming, so I move that we close the public hearing.
A second.
Okay, so moved. If I was in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any other discussion, any other questions before we call for motion?
I, I'd like to publicly thank the department, the hard work they're doing. That's pretty amazing to do, be so efficient and do such a good job there, you know, to be. That, that has a big impact on our community and the vitality of it. And we appreciate your hard work, so thank you very much.
Do you think developers will see it as a bargain? Do you think people that come in and look at this impact fee are going to be, you know, blown back by that amount?
I think that the $2,886 per house is a very small percentage of the way to count many developers. I don't think it really would make much difference. But what it does is allows us and mechanisms to be able to build us facilities for growth uses. And not put that burden on the taxpayer, which is balanced, I should.
And it has, it has been a big shock for the last 20 years to see what's happened with the impact fees. But we have a lot of growth going and I think it's a, anyway. I'm a developer, so I see that, see that fact in it, you know what I mean? When you can, each element is everyone has come through to be below the average. And that's, that's a positive thing in my opinion, so.
Can I ask a question here? In this, I'm just flipping the coin over. Is there any way, based on your projections and, and potential for growth, that we're shortchanging the department with this lower number? And I'm, I'm not, I mean, I'm a, I have a whole house, had a whole house full of consumers that'll be absorbing some of these impact fees, so I'm not suggesting we increase it. But is this, is this enough to compensate for what's got to happen in the future? And what we're anticipating going to happen in the future, are we shortchanging ourselves? Do you understand the question?
Yes, I do. It's a good question. I do not see. So the video.
I, I do not see that we're shortchanging Public Works or the city. I see that what we've gone through is we've actually gone through a consultant and with our good staff, our good leadership behind me, we've gone through and looked at all these projects. And they cost a certain amount of money and we know what capacity they add. And then we can go through and find out exactly what that is. So we feel totally that we're in, within the Utah law, that it's defensible and that maximum allowable is the right number.
And how often do you review these?
So the mayor's asked us to review these every year. The master plan document, there's actually three documents. We do the master plan, then we do an impact fee facilities plan, which is the projects that the master plan identifies. And then we do an impact fee assessment document that takes the cost of those projects and divides it by the equivalent residential units that would be growth related. And that's where you come up with that number. So these are, we're doing these, the mayor's given us a charge to do the impact fee analysis every year because costs are moving around so much.
But even if we thought we needed more, this is our maximum allowable via the state, right?
Yeah, you cannot charge more.
Perfect.
Chair Anderson, I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that, that public hearing was for both item one and item two.
Okay. So does anyone want to come forward on item two? So yes, the way I said that, you're correct.
So you, yeah, you may want to open the.
So do you mean to open, we'll open another public hearing for the wastewater treatment plant, master plan for impact fees. Anyone want to come forward?
I move we close. If there's no activity.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, perfect. Any other questions on any other?
Thank you, very thorough.
Yeah, I thought it was very great.
Very clear.
Okay, well, I'll call for a motion.
I don't see a motion that we have. Is there a motion that's written?
Just on a recommendation.
That would be great, yeah. That would help me to make sure I include everything that you've got, so. Because we need to do two.
We need to do them separately, yep.
I move that we recommend approval of the Springville Public Works request for the adoption of the wastewater treatment plant, master plan, impact fee, facility plan, and impact fee analysis.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, you call for a motion on the second item?
Yeah, I'll make the move here. I move to recommend approval of the Springville Public Works request for sewer collections master plan, impact fee facility plan, and impact fee analysis to the city council.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Okay, we'll move to the third item on the legislative session, which is Edward Axley. Who's presenting?
I'm, I'm presenting, I guess. Could you read the?
Yes.
The item in.
The UBA Development requests amendment to the Lakeside Landing Special Overlay District to amend the regulation, regulating plan to adjust the transect designations block geometry and thoroughfare configuration of the south part and to addition, and to add architectural design standards applicable to the southern part.
Thank you. Do you have the, do we have the staff report? Ah, there we go. Thank you. All right, I don't have a, actually a slide deck for you tonight because it's really, this is really centered around discussion. I just want to put it on to the right. Yeah, it's, it's fine. I'm just looking for the right sheet here. So load up for you. Okay, thank you. So background really for the four of you in particular. As we, we really only have one planning commission member who was present for this whole Lakeside Landing process. Some of you maybe have been around for a couple of the amendments we've made, but for background, we, the city, UBA, which is the parent company of Davies Design Build, and Lakeside Land Partners, the two primary property owners in the area, started a process in mid 2020 to develop a plan and an implementing code for the Lakeside Landing District. The code affects about 200 acres, primarily to the west of the front road industrial, to the west of the freeway, north of Four South, south of 500 North. Basically stopping at Spanish Fork Community through 2600 West, accepting about a 20 acre parcel on the opposite side of that.
Can you zoom out on a map somewhere?
Yeah, let me show you the overall. Perfect. I could also show you the overall plan, but.
Does that include the old transfer station property?
That's part of the property controlled by UBA and part of the property that's under specific consideration tonight. So if I turn the zoning layer on for you here and turn the overlay districts on, maybe it'd be better if I turned. So everything that has this hatch on it, I think it's actually like an L, but you can't really, can't tell. Everything that's within that, this boundary is currently, and there's, there's an error here actually. Everything that's within this boundary is within the Lakeside Landing District. So here's I-15, here's 400 South. The plan was adopted in late 2021 as the Lakeside Landing Special District Overlay. It's a bit of a mouthful, but it seemed to be the most efficient way to communicate what we were trying to do. Since then, and, and a key point is that that process did take a long time. It was very iterative. It, we had multiple meetings before the planning commission and the city council. We had multiple in, you know, meeting upon meeting internally, multiple versions of that plan that evolved to address the needs of the applicants and the desires of the city. Working together, it was a great collaborative process. Since then, we've amended the plan a couple times to add, the first one was to add a property to the district. The property located here, 15 acres, was not part of the district because the, the owners didn't participate initially. But in a pretty clever or well timed move, an investor bought that property and entitled it and then sold that to a home builder, taking advantage of all the work that all the parties had done to put that code into place over the past, over the prior 18 months. So we added some property, about 15 acres so far, to the original district and addressed both errors in the code and issues that have been surfaced by going through the development process with the code. We currently have three applications for three separate subdivisions within the Lakeside Landing District and a home builder that's working diligently on a fourth area. And going through those processes and confronting the intricacies of the code and unanticipated or unplanned needs through the development process has resulted in a couple iterations of revision or amendment to that plan over time. So staff, administration, the applicant, the consultant team, Palona Architects and Urbanists from Boulder that basically are the author of the plan and corporate owner and one of the principals of that company and the primary author of the plan is here with us tonight. I think we'd all agree that the plan is pretty well thought out and calibrated well as a whole plan across these 200 acres. And one of the staff concerns, or one of the, the general concerns from the city is, is represented in the staff report, is the abrupt, I guess abrupt has a negative connotation, but the, the substantial change from the plan as it is currently constituted to what UBA is proposing to do now. And that that plan hasn't benefited from the same amount of collaboration and iterative review as the initial plan, but has, could have an outsized effect on the success of the whole community as, as a whole. UBA brought us these amendments. I saw them for the first time in July on a Zoom meeting and we've met multiple times since then. The applicant has met with staff administration, elected officials. And through the process, staff proposed a method to accomplish some of what the applicant was trying to do. Initially, the proposal was to amend the code to allow units in this T6. I probably have to stop. I'm forgetting that I know what all this means. Lakeside Landing is a form-based code that, depending on who you talk, which urbanist you talk to, they'd say it was a lot type or a building type code. So it's primarily formatted around the, what types of lots can be placed in which transect. And the transect you can think of as a subzone, kind of a graduation of color within the overall zone. With T3 being the less intense, the least intense zone, closest to kind of suburban development interfacing with undeveloped areas. All the way up to in this, in this code, we have a T6 area, which is kind of the urban center. It's not the urban center you would see if this transect was applied to Salt Lake, but it's the most intense area of this, of the Lakeside Landing Plan, so.
Is this all housing or is it mixed use?
It's mixed use. Overall, as the plan is currently constituted, entitles about 2,000 units. And this one I'm having to test my memory on, but I think 110 to 120,000 square feet of commercial. The plan is set up with these transects and each transect is matched up to a set of lot types that are available for that transect. So you've, we've got one through 27 or 28 lot types. And not all of those lot types are available in every transect. You can't put a Main Street mixed use apartment building in the T3 transect. And you can't put some cottages and duplexes, some of the smaller detached and attached product in the T6 transect. Because the T6 transect is really the more urban and intense transect. So the initial proposal was to, or thought was to amend the transects to allow different lot types. We determined that the least impactful method in terms of changes in the code and changing the way the code function would to be actual, would to re-be, rezone this area, the southern part. It's divided into two regulating plans, the southern part and the northern part. The southern part's under the control of UBA. So staff proposed rezoning it down to the T5 transect from the T6 transect. And the T5 transect permits all of the lot types that UBA is desiring to be able to use in their new plan. In general, the plan, as you can see in the tables down here, from the adopted plan, they're calling out 516 units maximum. And the new plan would permit a maximum of 331 units. This number's a little less than the numbers in the original plan. There may be some math difference, but it's a substantial, you know, 200 unit decrease in, in unit count. It, because.
Is that like the number, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt.
Oh, go ahead.
So is that, what's, what is five? So is that, what's, what does 516 mean? Is that 516 housing units or? Units, housing units, what?
Doors.
Doors. That's mixed number, right?
That's, yes, that included. Everything from liner, small cottage homes to. Twin homes and single family homes in this T4 area up to. Live work buildings, Main Street mixed use apartment buildings, a bunch of different mixed use type products. And other types of fee simple kind of live work products. It has a wide, a really big palette of available lot types within the code.
So are they requesting a reduction in density?
They are requesting a reduction in density. Correct. So generally, as outlined in the staff report. Staff. Believes that the council and most likely the planning commission favors less residential density and shorter. A smaller building heights in new development. And in the abstract. Staff and administration don't oppose the concept of a down zone. But in this case, we're concerned that the down zone of what was originally planned in the context of the whole development to be the town center. To be really the, the, the core and the most intense area of the plan. Changing that could compromise the original vision and purpose of the plan. And compromise some of the key elements that were, that are stated in the plan that it's a walkable, diverse, vibrant neighborhood. So we've gone through the process of articulating those concerns and breaking them down into four categories. Now, these concerns have been communicated verbatim to the applicant.
Could I ask, ask a quick question before we go to the concerns? Just so I'm understanding totally. So we got mixed use and we got housing. Or is this, is this new proposal increase the square footage of the mixed use or are we?
It drastically decreases it.
It decreases the, like the individual lot size or, and I may be.
It doesn't change any lot standards. It just changes.
About the square footage for each unit.
Yes, it changes the transect, which changes what lot types are available. And the transect also, depending on the transect, is how much commercial is required. So you can see. Over here.
Sorry, it's pretty small.
No, no, this is, yeah, I, I'll zoom in on it. That, and I could pull up the regulating plan.
Different glasses to this way soon.
So. The T5I, T5 and T6 transects require commercial on a per acre basis. And the acres are determined by everything that is. Developable and that doesn't include. Dedicated parks and open spaces. It doesn't include the roads or the alleys. So basically it's the developer maintained common area. And all property in lots that gives you the total area in the transect. So previously, the. Because the majority of the southern part was or is in the T6 transect. That amount of acreage, 18.45 requires 62,000 square feet of commercial. And the T5I area requires an additional 6,600. Under the proposed plan. Because. We now have reduced. The amount of area in T6, which has a slightly higher. Commercial requirement and we have, the, the real issue, the real driver here is that we've drastically reduced the amount of area in transect. Because on the original or the current regulating plan, you can see that. There are no alleys or other types of accesses within the blocks, except on this northwestern block. That's because all of these unit types are loaded off of common drives and parking lots. And serviced by those parking lots and all that property tallies into the transect area. So if you come back to this table. Both the change in transect and probably, and mostly the change in acreage in the transect going from 22 to 16. We reduce the required commercial required by those ratios in the code. By approximately 30,000 square feet from 69,000 to 39,000. So the new plan or the proposed plan while not requiring. Not changing any of the specific requirements of any of the lot types in terms of setbacks. Or how much of that lot can be commercial or height or any of that. Simply reduces the required commercial over this whole area by that 30,000 square feet.
So what happened to the difference in the total area? How come we're down to 927 over the 1.1?
Okay.
Not being used.
Which number are we looking at?
On, on the totals in those charts, total area totals.
Down here it?
You have 1.1 million square feet.
Oh, yes, because the, the difference in that is all these alleys. And this additional road.
So in the short, you're saying that they're going to use alleyways to load.
Single, primarily, single family attached and detached product. The, the 30, the elevator pitch of what they're trying to do. Is move from a predominantly multifamily and mixed use project to one that is predominantly single family. That is houses or cottages, duplexes and townhomes, predominantly townhomes. To enable the transfer or the sale of that property to a production home builder.
So is there street parking on those?
Yes, there's street parking everywhere and each unit has parking on its lot. So now instead of having a larger apartment building with a shared parking lot to the rear. You have individual fee simple townhomes, duplexes and cottages that have their own garages.
Fed by those alleys.
Fed by those alleys. So if you take this new street and all of these alleys. Out of this plan, that represents the difference.
Difference. So how wide are those alleyways in there?
They meet the current code. They're 20 to 24 feet wide.
For, for parking as well?
No, there's no parking allowed in alleys.
That's, that's what I was asking. Sorry, I misunderstood then. That's what I was asking. If there's parking, the street parking on the alleys, there is none.
There's no street parking permitted in the alleys. There are. If I go, come down to the, the reg, the illustrative plan here, you can see that there are instances where. There is shared parking. That is located in common area off of outside of the alley. So it doesn't compromise the alley right of way. But there is shared, there is surface parking accessed by the alley as well as the individual garages.
Maybe the applicant will clarify this when they come talk to us, but. So I'm just curious how the serv, how they service the, you know, if you're bringing a semi in to load. The commercial in an alley way. That, that's, I'm curious to see how that plan, you know, was effective and I'm just, just listening and learning what your, work you've done, but.
Yeah, it's a good question. All of the commercial. Is either on a public street or on a straight through alley. So without having much knowledge of that. I'm confident that these may accept for this. But mo, most of the alleys would be navigable by, by a service vehicle. And all of the, the public streets in front of those units would be.
So are the alleyways mostly for the residential units then?
The alleyways are to provide access to the residential units and to provide access to the surface parking required for the commercial.
Okay, so is it, is it like the front door is an alleyway or is it, what is it?
These are in the rear of the buildings, right?
Just like, it looks to me like the doorways or is that the doorways that are on the plan there?
Well, the ground floor commercial in these instances would be primarily accessed from the public right of way, from the street. There's usually service doors and accesses to the upper floor residential.
So on this lower left hand side right there, those inner, that inner alleyways, what are those triangles for? I'm just trying to understand it.
Down here?
Yes.
These triangles?
Yes.
Those are, represent parking spots. Those represent garages.
So they're garages, not street parking.
Correct. For these units, every single, every residential unit that is a fee simple, not mixed use unit. So a single family home, a duplex or a townhome has its own parking in a garage attached to the unit.
Okay, yeah. And then the other side of that unit is the front door.
Correct.
Access to coming in.
Correct.
So like for an Amazon truck that's coming in. To deliver to each home and they would be stopping in the front of the house in that street, that wider street.
Probably.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just understanding the concept and.
Yeah, I've, I've heard tales of woe from Amazon drivers in, in urban areas and they're.
They don't, they don't care.
Using their dollies, but I think.
They just close and, you know, who's going to complain because I'm getting my Amazon, right?
Yeah.
Thank you for that time.
Yeah, I mean, would it, it may, it may be helpful and this again is where. I often struggle to remember that I've dealt with this for five years and all of you haven't. And so I need to go through the process of helping everybody come up to speed. But if you'd like, I can show you the, the regulating plan of the, the original regulating, I mean, not the original regulating plan. You've seen that here. But the illustrative plan for the current. Plan, if you'd like, before we go to discussing the concerns, staff.
I, I think I understand. So the proposal is they want to add alleyways to access and put garages in from the backside of the units.
Yes, but that would, that's a kind of a secondary consideration because they could do that. They could put alleys in by right. What they're requesting is a change in the zoning from T6 to T5. I'm just going to go grab the copy and hold on a second. It'll be easier to understand. Sorry for the wait.
Fine, thanks for answering the questions.
Yeah, and please keep asking them. We're often so deep in this that.
We will.
We're like, oh, yeah, we, we know what the old plan looked like because. So I'm just going to. Open this up in Acrobat. So that it works. You'd think the fact that it downloaded it to show it in the browser meant it was already downloaded, but maybe.
Still going.
Okay. So I'm going to take us first to the regulating plan. So these are the transects and these are the lot types that are permitted in each transect. So in the T3, what has been called the Garden Village transect, you can build. Suburban mansion, which we all understand might be a little bit of a misnomer. But you can build a large suburban house. Smaller suburban house, a house that has a, a rear garage access from the front. And then houses, cottages and twin houses that are alley loaded with a number of permitted uses. In the T4, you lose the one, two and three lot types. And everything goes to alley loaded lot types for down to 19, not necessarily, well, in this case it is. Consecutive. Nope, we're missing 17, but generally, so you can see that each transect and then down over here in the T5. It adds more, but takes some off the bottom. So the transects kind of move their way up in terms of intensity.
So can you go back? So that small, a town, small apartment building is like, how many units? What's that mean? Is that like 12 units? Is it?
16.
I mean, some would call small, different.
I could go back but, and look at it, but Corcat knows, it's always said it's four.
So it's a fourplex basically.
Yes. So if you go down to the T6 or the T5 and T6, you can see that they cut out. Majority of the kind of more suburban, single family and attached and detached uses or lot types. So the. Least intense lot type that's permitted in the T6 is this backyard townhouse, which is a townhouse with a backyard with the garage to the rear. So there's space in between the garage and the townhouse. And then up through, you know, your Main Street mixed use apartment building, which is the most intense lot type. And then commercial, standalone commercial uses and parking structures, those types of things. So with the. Majority of the southern part currently zoned T6. They don't have access to all of these lot types that they're really interested in using, which on this plan. Is. Primarily the compact cottage, which is lot type six. The compact cottage twin house, which is 12. The compact townhouse, which is 15. And the, and so those are the ones, so if we go down here. You can't get the six and 12 in the T6. So they're asking to rezone that down to the T5 so they can access those lot types. So that the southern part, and I'm going to come down now to the illustrative plan. Which is just a one idealized. Or Corcat's words exemplary site plan among many possible outcomes. But represented what the overall essentially communicated the intent of the plan. So this is the, this is the southern area. Illustrative plan in the current plan. So you can see that it's, there are a lot of multifamily units. Again, this doesn't represent what was actually proposed by the applicant when it came to subdivision. But the intent was for this to be a mix of multifamily units. Different types of multifamily units, some multi, some deep townhomes or other. Court loaded multifamily product, a single family and single family attached. Commercial and then. A smattering of other types of lot types to fill in specific. Needs in terms of layout. So.
So Josh, is a lot of the commercial then coming out of this?
Correct, 30,000 square feet.
It would be a long 400 would have been.
Potentially, it could have been. In the iterations of the plan that we've seen from UBA. There were a number of different options of how to provide that required commercial. Ranging from kind of podium office space in some of these buildings on the east side of the project. To standalone commercial buildings to ground floor commercials surrounding the, the central village green.
Just so I'm understanding the project and are they, is this like, are they managing the roads or is this all turned over to the city? Is this not?
All of the roads come to the city, all of the alleys or.
Like a PUD or something like that?
No, all of the, all of the roads come to the city, uh, all the alleys, accesses, common parking areas stay with the developer, so there would be.
Association.
There would be homeowners associations in place, both a master homeowners association and individual ones to manage those, uh, spaces, so if you look at, if we come back to the regulating plan for the southern part, these roads come to the city, and this park comes to the city. Uh, these green streets are also, uh, dedicated to the city, but the maintenance and long-term care of those remains the obligation of the.
Are all the utilities in the cities right away, or are they?
Uh, it depends, uh, some of the utilities, uh, depends on which project we're in, we've actually developed a, uh, as we started looking in this area here, developed a cross-section for utilities in alleys, where the entire alley and up to five feet, depending on the, uh, application on each side of that alley, in the rear setbacks of the lots, is a public utility easement. Uh, to, simply to be able to get to all the units, uh, especially ones that don't front directly on a street, and to reduce, uh, instances where, uh, for example, let's take, uh, what would be a good section? Let's take this green street here, to avoid having, uh, what you see in, a lot in Daybreak is, let's see, one, two, three, you take, add these up and drop that many meter cans, uh, here in the park strip, and then run laterals to all of those down the green, and that really chews up real estate in the, uh, park strip, makes it hard to plant trees at the spacing and rhythm we want, and it also leads to a higher number of taps in the service line in close proximity to each other. Our engineers sometimes calling it like swiss cheesing the water main.
Yeah, it'll split it.
So, uh, we've found that accommodating a public utility easement through the alleys to serve especially these that don't have a direct connection onto the street, serve those units is a, is a ideal way of doing it, so it depends on where we're at. Utilities are either in streets or in alleys, but always covered at least to the end of our service, uh, to the meters by a public utility easement.
So most of the service lines are on private, but the main lines are on the streets?
Uh, yes, it depends, uh, again, somewhere, like in this project, you might see a service line come through an alley, uh, or a street, it really depends on the si- the solution that the individual civil engineers have come up with. Uh, but generally, there aren't transmission lines or backbone lines that aren't in streets. The only utilities that are in alleys are the small service lines accessing the private laterals.
Thank you, I was just curious.
Uh, and that's actually not something that's specifically called out i- in the plan, that's something that we've had to kind of work our way through in the intervening time to figure out how, how that best works. Uh, so just for, uh, comparison, just so you have a better side by side. I can get my mouse to work here. If I can, there we go. This is, on the left is the proposed, uh, again, I want this to go away. Uh, is the proposed illustrative plan, and this one's a, a little different, 'cause it's got trees all over it and this one doesn't. So that, this is the proposed on the left, and what could be built, or a general representation of what was originally intended here on the right. Uh, so there, uh, there are, looking from the top identifiable pluses, in that there is more, uh, green space on the proposed plan. There's an addition of this, uh, green street in this block, which is not present on this block, and, uh, the addition of this street, and a lot more, uh, private open space that's part of lots, instead of a lot of that aggregated space ending up in surface parking. I really wish that would just go away. Sorry. Are there any more general questions about what's trying to be accomplished here?
I'm, I'm clear not, still not clear, sorry, go ahead. I'm still not clear, is it, so the square footage of the mixed use is not really defined necessarily at this point?
No, it, it absolutely is, uh, not the square footage of product, of the total mixed use product, like if we said, uh, apart- apartment, a main street department building that had commercial on the ground floor, if we looked at the total square footage of that, no, but what the plan identifies is a basically two key metrics the plan gives us, it gives us a maximum number of residential units that can be built, uh, and it gives us a minimum amount of required commercial. We were concerned, uh, in the original drafting of the plan, that on the residential side, we weren't committing to a, uh, an out, to a guaranteeing a ma- a number of units, but that if everything works out, and the parking works, and the lot types fit, that you could yield a maximum number of units. On the converse, we were very concerned that the proper amount of commercial be produced in this area, so that is a minimum, a must build. Uh, so in the case of the existing regulating plan, it requires six, close to seventy thousand square feet of commercial, and under the amendments, because of the changes to the plan and the changes to the, uh, transect assignments, that required commercial drops to about forty thousand square feet.
Okay. Is it, is it defined as like the minimum size of the commercial?
Of the individual spaces?
Yeah.
No, that's an aggregate number, so it's basically, uh, anything you could build using one of the lot types. So that could be, that sixty-nine thousand here could show up in one box, uh, or it could show up in a mixture of, uh, a neighborhood store, and office space, and ground floor commercial, um, really depending on how the, the developer decided to implement that.
How to implement it, okay. I just, my concern is, is if we have mixed use with a whole bunch of small units, they just sit vacant and the residents are there, but there's like nothing, you know, we have some multi-use, mixed use that basically isn't really utilized. And a lot of, and a lot of communities are having that challenge, because you meet the requirements for mixed use, you put commercial on the bottom, they're small units, and no office building is gonna, I realize they're doing a model that overall works, but the city is still the one that has to have, show vacancy rates and things like that, so I'm curious, so, thank you.
Yeah, uh, and that's a really interesting concept, there's a lot of zoning that I would consider, or would say that requires a minimum amount of commercial erroneously. Uh, my hometown in Murray is one of those, uh, in their zone, you have to have a certain amount of, uh, mixed use, wherever that zone is, no matter where the zone is. And there's a great, you'll, uh, Urban Land Institute article from a number of years ago that criticizes that kind of blanket mixed use requirement, uh, s- really with the simple critique that if we try to force especially vertical mixed use in an area that is not walkable, and doesn't have any sense of place or identity, is essentially a car oriented area like, uh, I can never remember the name of it, where all the, the old dreams was in Provo, or, uh, the senior housing here next to McDonald's, that in both of those cases, there are problems with them being in, located in places where it's trying to force something and that doesn't necessarily fit, but then those buildings also became really terrible futons of mixed use development, in that they're built, their site is built like a traditional suburban development, but they just put apartments on top, so they don't have any street engagement, they don't have any walkability, they don't have any character, uh, they don't feel like part of the city, they feel like a strip mall with apartments on top of it.
And it can be a sacrificial lamb for development, that's.
Absolutely, especially.
Wanna see.
Yeah, especially in the case where so much underwriting discounts, uh, or doesn't really give you credit for the income, potential income off of those spaces.
Mixed use, because they're too small, basically, there's really difficult for a business to grow in that small a space.
And i- in depending on how units are built, uh, how space can be demised is often flexible, which is what I've noticed, especially in larger scale projects, uh, especially like ones I've worked on in Provo, uh, that you can have three storefronts, but you can also, you know.
Endable.
It's demizable between six thousand square feet down to, you know, two thousand square foot units. Uh, but the, the reason we're comfortable with the amount of square footage called out here is because of the substantial amount of population that exists in this area, and the flexibility and different ways that the commercial could be implemented. Uh, this lakeside, as it's currently entitled, could yield about two thousand residential units, so let's take on the high side, let's say we're at three, well, it's probably, it's probably decent, the numbers are coming down, but let's say three, uh, uh, household highs, size of three, so you have six thousand households there, and then you have, uh, a couple hundred more units in five star directly to the south, and then, uh, wow, the other, uh, apartment project on Spanish Fork Main, just a, a, a block or two south of, uh, four south, that are both in Springville, uh, and then additionally potential for hundreds of more units to the west on the remaining, uh, property between Spanish Fork Main Street and the west city boundary. S- so, there, there definitely is that possibility, uh, that of having underutilized commercial space. Uh, it also has a lot to do with phasing and how, uh, a project matures over time, and when that commercial is brought online. Uh, so we, we take the, you know, multi-decade view, uh, at least from the staff and the city perspective, we, we don't obviously want something to languish for fifteen years, well, we're just saying it's gonna work, it's gonna work. But we felt comfortable, both based on the assertions of the developer, uh, the consultant team, and other expert's testimony, I guess, uh, that was brought in to justify that number, uh, that the, the commercial, required commercial and the residential was well, well calibrated. And that's actually one reason why we went to a T six zone for the south, was to enable UBA to achieve the density they felt was necessary to create a vibrant village center and support that, those uses that let people not have to get in their car and drive to Walmart for everything. Which isn't, which is a bad outcome.
I- if I were living there, I would probably enjoy the green space anyway, so then you've created more of that.
Uh, so if we come back to the, uh, to the staff report, and I'll just, get us back to this page. The staff concerns, and, and again, these have been discussed at length with the applicant, are four, the first is that w- we feel that, as I just mentioned, the original plan had a well calibrated amount of commercial space, and the minimum required commercial space, as proposed by the new amendment, uh, drops fifty-six percent, or drops forty-four percent to th- uh, just fifty-six percent of what was required originally, decrease of, uh, just a little more than thirty thousand square feet. And that diminishes the neighborhood's diversity and walkability. There's, with fewer commercial amenities, the walking is less useful, and less interesting, which are kind of two of the keys of what makes people walk. Uh, it makes it less useful, because if fewer daily needs can be met within walking distance, then it results in additional vehicle trips out onto major arterials to exist, to access existing commercial a- areas. And interest in walking is increased by active ground floor uses, if there's something going on in a, in a space, whether it's an, an office, or a retail, or a restaurant, or even a live-work space, that adds interest to the street as people walk. And in terms of that, as we noted in the staff report, in trying to activate a street and provide interest, the overall square footage is probably less important than kind of the linear footage of active uses. But all that together, uh, we feel there's a concern there, we don't know what the right amount, the exact right amount is, and don't believe there's necessarily an exact right amount, but we're concerned that, uh, that decrease could have negative impacts on the community, and make it, uh, again, less diverse, less walkable, less, less of a, a place where people can meet their daily needs. Uh, we, and in regards to that concern, I'll review each of our recommendations as we go through them, and then review them again at the end. We are proposing that, uh, we accept that amount of commercial, that they're, that they're proposing in the amendment, noting those concerns. Uh, the second element is in terms of the overall plan, the one we have the most concern with. In short, if this amendment goes through, we could see essentially hundreds upon hundreds of the same townhouse duplex and cottage over these two hundred acres. In the two, uh, subdivisions that are in process right now, they are predominantly a compact cottage, a compact cottage twin home, which is two cottages stuck together, same, it's the same lot type, and compact townhomes. Uh, no one's utilizing the backyard, uh, lot types, and no one's utilizing any of the other courtyard, loaded lot types. All of those are being driven to kind of the average, that everyone's just going for that small lot type, uh, most efficient, and not providing a large diversity of lot types, 'cause it's easier, if you're a home builder, to come in and have three plans and build a hundred and forty of those, than to build six or eight or ten plans. And if this area changes from being kind of the more intense town center, it really flattens the overall two hundred acres, in that there really now isn't an area which is noticeably more or less intense than the rest of the area. This is really where the focus of the multifamily and the commercial was for the whole plan. And to us, and I'm gonna read just a little bit here, uh, from the plan, uh, the plan says, "Lakeside Landing is aimed at creating a diverse community in terms of both uses and lifestyles, diversity of use creates resiliency. In terms of residential use, Lakeside Landing accommodates not only detached houses, but also cottages, twin houses, townhouses, clusters, and apartments, as well as live-work units, and each of these appeal to a certain lifestyle and a certain phase of life. Mixing families with children, empty nesters, young couples, and other household types creates a healthy community with strong mutual support and social interaction. It also creates resiliency in times of reverency." So downzoning to permit primarily small, single-family attached homes in this area greatly diminishes the overall residential diversity across all of Lakeside Landing. And, uh, both administration and, uh, public safety has expressed concern about a very monolithic, uh, community in terms of unit type and price point, that, uh, as we try to do in the west fields, a diversity of price point and diversity. Unit type and price point, that, uh, as we try to do in the West Fields, a diversity of price point and diversity of. Of unit types does, as was stated in the original plan, uh, create resiliency and that if. That the market band or the, uh, the demographic band that. Utilizes or moves into this neighborhood because all the units are the same, is all the same, that creates, uh, issues. Long term. Uh, that.
You're vulnerable, you're more vulnerable, of course.
Absolutely, uh, it, just like a monoculture of street trees is more vulnerable to Dutch elm disease, having. Hundreds of the same unit is more vulnerable to. All kinds of, uh, all kinds of issues and lacks really that. Multi-life phase ability that mentoring and other, uh. Mutual support, uh, strength that you get in a more diverse neighborhood. So our recommendation, uh, with that. Has been refined since we, uh, published the staff report. Uh, after additional discussion among, uh, legal administration and, and community development. We now, uh, would recommend that the southern part use at least ten lot types. Six residential and four mixed use and no single lot type may exceed thirty-five percent of total lots. So if you look at the current application. Or the, the proposal, the explanatory materials. They're currently proposing to use four, uh, single family. Types or four solely residential types, the compact cottage, compact cottage twin house, the compact townhouse. Which are again, basically the same lot, just single to get in, in pairs and in multiples. And then the compact urban townhouse, which is a taller, more, uh, uh, in intensely developed kind of unit. And then they're proposing to use three, uh, mixed use types, the main street cottage, live-work, uh, the main street. Slot townhouse cluster and the main street row building. The, on the residential side, the compact townhome at a hundred sixty-three units constitutes fifty-three percent. Of the total, uh, solely residential units, so staff's proposed, uh, recommendation would. Reduce that, uh, compact townhouse. Percentage of total units by eighteen percent. Requiring about thirty units to be allocated to other lot types and an additional two lot types to be utilized in addition to the existing four. Or, uh, in his, in addition to the four that already proposed and then one additional mixed use or commercial lot type would need to be. Uh, included. So that's our recommendation in terms of, uh. Market segmentation, unit diversity.
So Josh, do you see that more or less as a compromise?
I am engaged in a. Collaboration and conflict, uh, resolution class right now and. Having had even more negative connotation put towards compromise, I think that, yes, this is. Somewhat of a compromise, I do. I hope it results in mutual gains for both parties, which is really the best outcome for negotiation. But it's difficult when the interaction is structured in such a way that. The applicant makes an application and says, this is our position, this is the thing we want to do, which makes it harder to step back and say, hey. Why do you want to make this change, what are your interests, is there, uh, market absorption concerns, is you think that the initial plan was. Flawed, or you have financial concerns, uh, how could we address those, you know, maybe the, there's other ways to address. Uh, concerns that would lead to this outcome and lead to a different outcome. But basically having to respond to the position proffered by the applicant. It is a bit of a compromise, but I think it can result in mutual gains because I think. Long term for the neighborhood and for the residents there, a more diverse neighborhood. Will be superior for the short term pro forma of a national publicly traded home builder. It may not be, but I'm honestly not particularly concerned with the pro forma of a nationally traded public. Or a national publicly traded home builder, there, they'll be okay. And they'll be out of the project in a couple of years and we'll be looking back forty years later saying, did we do the right thing? Uh, so that really comes back to the statement I listed in the analysis that in some cases incremental adjustments to a plan or code. Provide gains for both the city and the development community, in other cases, we have to be careful to maintain side of the original plan. And ensure we don't move away from the original vision and intent by overly accommodating the interest of developer, which, uh. Often, and it's, it's not a good or bad thing, but it just is, are often differentiated by their time scale. Typically, the city's time scale is substantially longer than that, uh, of a developer. So yes, that, that's how I would respond to that diversity question.
Ask the question about commercial.
Mm-hmm.
Talk about businesses coming in and renting whatever commercial has been put there, but is that commercial also where Taco Bell or whatever could come in?
If they meet the lot type standards. Mm-hmm, so they couldn't have a drive-through. Uh, they'd have to build to the streets and, you know, access the parking off an alley or off of a appropriate access.
One concern is you bring in that, that much more population, where are they going to get their fast food?
Right.
Going back across on an already busy.
Right.
Yeah, and they won't, they won't allow you to build without those items.
With what?
Most of them won't allow you to have a franchise if they don't, they don't need a certain size, that's why I was talking about the mixed use. Cause even if you think, wow, this would be a great place for this type of business, the franchise, they'll say it's not enough square footage, you can't do it.
True, uh, even though I, as with everything, there's a lot of exceptions to the rule in great urban areas across the country where. A McDonald's is in historic, the ground floor of a historic main floor building, it's seven eleven, doesn't have gas pumps or parking. Uh, in Sugar House, there's a Chipotle in a storefront building with no drive-through and no parking.
Yeah, I, I recognize that, but we're not in that, those type of areas right now.
No, but if you get two thousand people living on two hundred acres, uh, you can start to develop. Uh, that ability for people to interact with commercial amenities in a different way, I think.
Can you put them back up side by side again, sorry, that was a little bit of an exercise, but on our sheet, it's, I'm flipping back and forth, so.
Yeah.
I realize there may be more green space on the one, but is it more public? Green space or is it just more?
It is generally more green space in lots or common area and leftovers. So you do get the addition of this green street here. And, and again, I want to make clear that this illustrative plan on the left does not represent what they have to build, this is just. Just like the first one, an example of what could be built, so we have no guarantee that this is exactly what you're gonna see.
There's no requirement to have that like pavilion and, uh, all that.
No, this is just.
An idea?
This is just an idea, what you see up here is what is regulatory. That these areas are T-five, this is where the alleys are and this is where the green spaces are. So all the green spaces shown here are part of pedestrian green streets or courts in some cases. Uh, and this is a park that would come to the city, so if you look at the green on this map and the green on this map. That really shows you the difference in green that's not within lots or in between lots.
So Josh, you said this park comes to the city for your maintenance, but you don't have to do the, the green space walks, is that what?
Yeah, so this, this park per the development agreement with the development parties.
You're gonna maintain it?
Is a dedicated public park that is constructed up to a certain cost per square foot by the developer and then dedicated to the city. The rest of these, uh, pedestrian green streets are dedicated by, via the plat to the city, but the maintenance of those remains with the adjacent HOAs.
That's not part of this thing, we're not modifying that?
No, none of that changes. Hmm, I about got it the same scale, there you go. Any additional questions before I move to the next one? Okay, uh, so the last two, uh, elements were first. Uh, active ground floor uses and street wall continuity along Main Street. We are concerned that, uh, on this plan, the potential. Gaps and reduction in number of doors by having side facing units, uh, here instead of. Uh, units oriented with their short side to the, their long, uh, short side to the street instead of their long side. That that diminishes the interest of people heading north from the park and. Heading north to the, what we call the northern neighborhood park, it's kind of like in Provo, if you walk Center Street and you get to. Uh, first you get to the Marriott if you're walking west from the really nice part of Center Street and it's kind of dead and black and. Nobody's in there and the doors aren't open and you're like, maybe I should just turn around, and then if you make it past that to the, uh. ABGs and the new restaurant on the corner, but then you get across to the convention center and then the convention center is set way back because the convent, the visitor, the. Convention visitors bureau thought they desperately need is pre-function space outside, which they never use. And so then that feels uninteresting and inactive and kind of barren and windswept. Uh, so you're less likely to continue on to where, uh, Joveras used to be. And we want to avoid that as much as possible, but there's definitely a, a balance there between a continuous wall on the street. With interesting things and breaks in that wall, but we wanted to. And have expressed the concern that the fact that these lot types, the really don't. Allow or accommodate ground floor commercial uses even in the future if somebody wanted to change it. Uh, those, they're not really a live-work or a mixed-use type, which some others shown on the illustrative plan are and could be. And could adapt and change over time, as Ralph's mentioned, to Ralph's concern, as the area evolves or matures. That those spaces can go either way, so they're not stuck as commercial or stuck as residential. Uh, that's less likely to happen if, uh. A production builder comes in and builds their units, uh, across the area, there's just not going to be that ability for that. To adapt and change over time, except for the areas that, uh, UBA has stated that they want to hold. To meet that a commercial obligation and that would really be these areas where you see the commercial. Uh, that concern's been addressed a little bit in the, uh, illustrative plan by bringing this commercial space to the road. And bringing the parking to the rear, uh, here, there's, you know, proposed to be some small kind of micro. Pop-up commercial units potentially, again, that wouldn't be required, uh, by the regulating plan, but just shown on this illustrative plan. So we'd like to insert language into the plan, non-binding language, but recommendation language. The whole plan is kind of centered off of some elements are binding and some of them are intended and recommendation statements. We'd like to see some language inserted to encourage ground floor active uses and continuous street wall along Main Street in this southern part. And then the last, uh, concern is the. Context appropriateness of the units on four hundred south. Uh. We felt that. This standard, uh, smaller townhome may not be contextually the best unit to be there. On a busy five lane arterial, uh, both from the experience of somebody living there or the expectations of somebody living there. And also for the design of the unit to have enough mass to really counteract the chaos of the road. To create some enclosure to make people slow down and feel like, oh, hey, I'm coming into a place here, it's not just more suburban development. And also signal kind of the entrance and draw people in, so on this illustrative plan. Uh, the applicant has proposed most of these units as the compact urban townhouse, which is a three-story plus. Uh, townhouse unit that would do a better job at kind of holding the edge of that street, uh, in the face of all that traffic. And asphalt. But, uh, they haven't proffered any guarantee of doing that, uh, but just shown it as an option on the illustrative plan. So we would also recommend inserting language to ensure, uh, appropriate lot types. Along that frontage, uh, again, that are currently proposed as compact urban townhomes. So those are the concerns and, uh. Staff's recommendation on those concerns, I'll summarize them as I discuss the recommended motions. Are there any additional general questions about the. Overall application or any of the particulars, old or new?
Just, just so that I'm catching up with you, I know you've been doing it for a while, but we're talking about lot development, not a build-out by somebody, right? So they're talking about, so the applicant is looking to develop lots. And then sell them to whoever's going to build it, so.
No, uh, a- as far as I understand and, and obviously invite them to speak to this. They are looking to convey super pads, uh, to, uh, that home builder and I don't know what. State those super pads would be in and at what point infrastructure would be installed in that transaction. But the intent would be to, is to create, as I understand it, large super pads that would then be purchased by. Uh, at least has been represented to me, a single large, uh, national home builder. And they would develop those units and then UBA would hold on to the, uh, remainder mixed use or commercial areas to develop those. So I, I don't believe that the lots would be fully improved before they would be conveyed.
Right, so as far as the control of it, then that's basically by the code.
The only guarantee we have is the code has become, uh, increasingly evident as we've gone through the process.
Yeah, so, okay.
Yeah, without any other development agreement or agreements, uh, I also, I wanted to, before we move on. Note that, uh, the applicant has proposed. One element to address the city's concerns about at least the aesthetic character of repetition. Of the same unit over and over and over again, I've come to. Be a little bit hesitant and I'm sorry, there's so much planning philosophizing happening here. Uh, but often I think planners, city officials are unduly concerned about. Repetition. Uh, cause if you look at some of the greatest urban places in the world, they are built out of a few simple building blocks. Uh, the Reynolds Building, one of our best buildings is a box, it is a perfectly rectangular box, but it's well articulated, it has a base, a middle, a top. Cornice, great windows, well designed, it's a better facade than the night block in Provo, I'd contend, love the, love the clock tower, but. This is, if you had Louis Sullivan come out and look, he'd say this building was better. Uh, so, and repeating that over and over again, I don't think anybody would get tired of, because like. Cookie cutter's not bad if the cookie's good. Uh, but our concern, especially with a production builder, is that often the cookie is not that great. Uh, and the desire to go above and beyond in terms of aesthetics. And materials and design diversity isn't there, so you end up getting the repetition of a cookie that's just kind of okay. It's not a crumble cookie, if you like crumble cookies.
Well, it's an economy.
It's, it's an economy product, correct.
So it's, it's, everyone is fighting the same budget.
Right.
You know what I mean, it's an economy, so we drive the house prices up to look greater.
Right.
Or we go back to the boxes.
But as I think.
Affordable, but they all look like boxes.
Well, and I think that's a, kind of a false dichotomy, dichotomy we create. Because some of the best looking houses and the best looking neighborhoods in Salt Lake are boxes. They just have nice white eaves and they're proportioned well, a lot of times a production builder will oval, overly complicate the house with bumps. And ins and out and different roof planes that make it more expensive and more difficult to construct. But not adding anything, but they're trying to essentially recreate the whole village in one house instead of doing simple, if you did simple gabled rectangular houses up and down the street and articulated them well, from a overall composition perspective, that would feel very good. So better design doesn't necessarily mean more expensive design on a square foot basis. And there's a lot of, a lot of examples of that.
It's not part for this discussion, but yeah.
Yeah, a lot of times it drives the market up, so a comparable house in Daybreak versus a comparable house somewhere else is more expensive because of the nice setting they've created, so it's almost, it's creating its own gentrifying effect. But.
I was gonna say, so if, if this were to be approved, we're basically creating more high-density housing. Would that be fair?
No, we're going, we're dropping density.
Okay, you're, yeah, you're dropping density, I guess I'm.
We're going from, we're going from apartments and other type, not necessarily apartment, multifamily, whether that be condominium ownership or apartment ownership and different types of those units to primarily townhouses and duplexes.
Taking out the, not the mansion, but what you mentioned earlier. Were you talking on it?
No, this, you can't build those mansion houses and those kind of things in this zone. Which is why they're down zoning. Well, they're down zoning so that they can use these compact cottages and compact cottage twin homes instead of the apartments. They're basically wiping most of the multifamily off the map and going to, probably to townhouses, single-family houses and, well, small houses, cottages, duplexes and townhomes.
Which for a developer, it sounds kind of counterintuitive.
It does. I think it depends on, on your interests and what your immediate needs might be. And Ed will contend that the market for multifamily is not good right now and that financing is hard. And to that we say, wait three to five years. Because we have a very different timeframe than the immediate performance needs of a developer. And it sounds harsh and uncaring, but it is kind of harsh and uncaring because we know that over time the demand will arise to deliver what we intended the plan to deliver and aren't as concerned that right now what everybody wants to build are small townhomes. So this, additional architectural standards as they were included in your packet essentially add a couple of things because in the T5 and T5I and T6 zones, the design standards are different and the requirements for diversity of elevations aren't as stringent as in the other zones. The, those more dense transects, because they were envisioned to produce larger buildings, were more based off of the number of different types of lots you had to have on a block face. But where we're transitioning to somewhere where in this case we have a whole lot of townhomes all lined up next to each other, they're proposing that for the houses, cottages and twin houses, that you can't repeat the same building elevation at buildings located side by side. We would generally interpret that to mean across the street too, but that's not expressly stated here. So as you go through these pages, only the, the the items with the bullet that is solid are regulatory. Everything else is a recommendation. And in Utah, it's, we basically can't make you do something unless it's specifically stated in the code. So if we came down and said, create facade variations by applying different mass articulations, a builder could say, no, thank you. It's not required. So that, that's a requirement. And then for townhouses, it's required that, again, you have to not repeat the same elevation. That a townhome instead of being built like a Brooklyn brownstone where you basically see the same townhome repeated next to each other, which is a totally viable option for building townhomes, that townhomes be created, be developed as a diverse composition, so the whole building kind of feels like one large building. And it's harder to tell each unit apart. And then the third would be that the townhomes can't use the same color scheme when repeated side by side. So the, for review, the four additional standards that they're proposing would be for houses, cottage and twin houses, you can't repeat the same elevation next to each other. And for townhomes, you can't repeat the elevation next to each other. You can't repeat the same townhome elevation within a building and.
Or the color scheme.
You can't repeat the color scheme between buildings. So it's, it's positive, but it's very, very minimal in terms of additional architectural standards and guidelines. I mean, I guess the guidelines are more, but the things that are actually standards are pretty minimal. So that brings us to the motion, if I can get my papers back in the right order, sorry. Our recommended motion is simply to deny the proposed change and keep the plan as it is. And move forward with confidence that the market will deliver the plan that we spent all that time working on eventually. It may not be in the next year, two years, three years. But in the long-term range of things, Daybreak's been around for 20 years and it's still growing and evolving and there weren't any houses in the West Fields other than, you know, a handful of people and you know who they are in 2000. And now it's almost completely built out, so that is our recommended motion to avoid all of the potential adverse outcomes that we've mentioned, just to stick with the plan. Alternatively, if there is a desire to move forward or advance this concept of this down zone, to be clear, a reduction in density, a reduction in the number of units, combined with all of the other elements that that creates, that the, the alternative motion would be to recommend continuance of the item so that staff and the applicant can address the concerns noted. Again, I'll go over those specifically, that the southern part must use at least 10 lot types, six residential and four mixed use and no single lot type may exceed 35% of total lots. That we, that language be inserted to encourage active ground floor uses and continuous street wall along Main Street in the southern part and that language be inserted to ensure appropriate lot types on 400 South. So to sum up, we're essentially saying out of all of our concerns.
Hey, Josh, I'm sorry, I, I see it may not exceed 40%.
Right, we had additional discussion today and arrived all together at 35.
Okay, so that would change.
That would change. And those other elements, the market segmentation plan and the price point diversity based on average area median income bands would, would go away. That would, that would no longer be part of the recommendation. Even though we quite like the, that idea, both in requiring a segmentation plan by somebody that we trust to maintain our interests in the project or requiring a certain amount of housing dedicated to different bands, like you could have 20% of the housing from 60 to 80% of area median income, 20 from, or 40 from 80 to 120 and then another 20 above that. That, that is a way of, of encouraging more price point diversity and socioeconomic diversity. And we're welcome to make that recommendation, but we're, our refined recommendation would be the, as written, the six residential and four mixed use lot types with no single lot type exceeding 35%. So out of the four concerns, we are not, not, not unconcerned about the commercial, but don't have an alternate proposal, so we would say, accept that that is proposed. And on the two active ground floor uses on Main Street and the appropriate lot types on 400 South, that we insert language to address those, but that the primary ask, and this has been the primary ask of the applicant all along, is to do something to address the diversity in the neighborhood, so we don't get an overabundance of one compact product type. And barring any specific proposal or response to that concern from the applicant, this is the proposal we have.
Any other questions?
So a continuance would give us an opportunity to hear from the developer and.
You will all, you will hear from the developer as the applicant tonight?
Oh, great, great.
So the, yeah, the, the order from here would be, you can ask me any initial questions. Then we would hear from the applicant, then you would open a public hearing and then ask any additional questions of myself or the applicant. And then it would come to the commission for discussion.
Okay.
So in any case, you won't make a, a motion until the end and you'll have the opportunity to have all your questions answered.
Perfect.
A continuance would simply allow us to go and it would communicate to the applicant, the planning commission's intent that we go and address the issues raised by staff and come back with a proposal we've all agreed on.
Perfect.
That's, that is my proposal. I'll minimize here, I know Corket was. I'm not minimizing, I'm not closing it, I was just minimizing and coming back to the top and. And then Corket, the, the table that you requested is open. We have, okay, it, it's open somewhere here. So that's, that's all I have, if you don't have any more immediate questions for me.
Right, thanks, Josh.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll open a public hearing when you come forward. Do you make a motion to open a public hearing?
I hear from the applicant first.
Oh, hear from the applicant first, okay, come on.
Thank you. My name is Corket Onaran. I'm with Pelona Architects and Urbanists. And I've been the consultant since the beginning of the whole project. And I've been really lucky to be involved in the writing of the code and all the discussions and negotiations. I just want to start with, again, making the transects clear. T5 allows 20 dwellings maximum per acre and requires at least 2,500 non-residential to be provided per acre. T6 allows 24 dwelling units maximum and requires 3,400 square feet non-residential per acre. The big difference between them is that T6 accommodates large apartment buildings for rent. T5 accommodates lot types that are more fee simple owner occupied. The reason we're coming back here is that in the region, Ed is gonna talk about it more, there is overbuilding of the rental apartment units and very limited small lot residential owner occupied units. That is rare and demand is increasing for those. The reason is that the young families don't have the same buying power nowadays. And that's the way a lot of builders reacted by providing rental. But now there is a demand for small lot startup lots. And that is the reason why we realize that there is a problem with what originally we were targeting for. Now, very clearly, as you can see, when you have large apartment buildings, you have large parking lots and therefore the blocks are pretty large. And when you go to the narrower lots, you provide alleys and you start getting more what we call green courts, common courts and small pocket parks. What I'd like to show, I mean, note that all those greens are lined up. So they are not gated. When you get out of your front porch, you start walking and then you arrive a street, a park, et cetera, so forth. So there is a network of green courts. Now, throughout the north, that's used to be very strong. When we started going to T6, there was a lot of concern from the, all the participants that that continuity is being damaged because of the big blocks. And there was a lot of discussion and there was a lot of actually objection to this kind of density in this particular location, but we thought that this is the right thing to do at that time. But, you know, at this point, to serve the market and to serve the needs the most is this kind of product. That is the reason why we're asking. Now, I'd like to clarify a couple of things. One is, what is a lot type? In this particular form, code, there's the building form, what we call lot types, and there are the land uses. And they are not necessarily corresponding, you know, in a regular code, when you say duplex, that's a use category. In this particular case, that's not a use category, that's a form. Use can be anything in it, if it is permitted in that particular transect. Meaning that unlike your typical code, this code allows transitions easily. Even though, you know, Josh talked about, you know, a townhome probably will not gonna be converted in the future, there's nothing in the code that says no. A lot of codes make that very hard, but in this particular code, conversions are very easy. You just go and change your tax category and you can have your business in a row home. This happens a lot of, you know, this used to happen in the history a lot. You know, you would, as the demand goes and, you know, change the zone. And when the, where the zoning allows this kind of transition, it still happens. So I really expect that, you know, the building type does not necessarily, when you have a really important frontage facing the green and all of a sudden there's a lot of demand for the commercial, there's no reason why that can be changed. Code allows you, market forces you to do that and you can easily have, you know, we see these kind of conversions a lot, you know, accountant moves in, architectural office moves in, et cetera, so forth. So another part of the code is that we're not changing that. Number of units goes parallel or connected with the amount of non-residential required. We're not changing that because we're demanding to drop the number of units by changing the transect. And the reason why we wanted to change the transect is that to accommodate duplexes and cottages. The T6 originally did not allow that. So first reaction was that, hey, can we allow that? But then, you know, the intent of the T6 was the really high density, doesn't mean that we cannot do less density. But it made a lot of sense for us to ask for changing the transect from T6 and not having T6 in this lakeside landing at all. Now, in terms of the production builder, there's nothing in the code saying that the apartments cannot be built by production builder. We put a pattern book and controlled the aesthetic of it and asked more if a production builder comes in and does the apartments, but that's it. Now, one other thing about that kind of plan is that commercial goes to the ground floor of an expensive building. When you mix uses vertically, the building gets expensive. You put, you know, two-story above retail, that is not only expensive, but needs to be owned by one entity and therefore most probably it's gonna be rental, not owner-owned. So the previous plan, that was our concern, that did not give any opportunity for owner-owned businesses to move in, which is. businesses to move in, which is, which are usually bread and butter of any community. That is to say, you know, a business startup getting and taking a space. So, interestingly enough, you were talking about the division. When that division allows you to own the land and the business, actually, there's a really good market for that, and what it also allows that diversity of the businesses. You know, square footage is one thing. The kind of services you're getting is another thing. So the chain stores, the, you know, the fast food stores and such would not go to a park like that and then because they don't have the kind of services they want. And increments, the lots that are divided are rather small for those. So the kind of businesses that are going to go there are most probably local neighborhood service providers, except for some important corners, you know, entrance corners, and then there's another building up north. Those are probably, you know, the small cafes and restaurants, et cetera, so forth. But most others, you know, within this 36,000, 46,000, we're thinking, we're thinking around 30 to 35 businesses. Most of those are going to be neighborhood service provider businesses. And that's very important in terms of to make this as a town center. You know, 46,000, you can put a big box on the corner and that's it. And the rest of this would be deserted. And that's not what we're trying to do. We're trying to do a village center with diverse set of service businesses. So that is the reason why we really focused on around the green and tried to define that. Now, there's a big difference between an apartment building and an owner occupied townhome in terms of the street engagement. If you have a porch facing the street, if there's a, you know, we do these kind of projects a lot, if, even if there's no person but just a chair, that's an indication of a life on the, in the unit. So the walk along the main street is going to be still very interesting, and we tried to do with the geometry and introducing some small parks much more engaging. And one other thing I'd like to mention is that, you know, we added these extra standards, and, you know, we do this kind of thing a lot. That is to say, you know, in Denver, for instance, there's a staple neighborhood, the name changed, the Central Park. We're the group who wrote the design book for them, you know, several buildings, builders coming in and trying to follow certain rules. And, you know, there are a lot of neighborhoods in Denver as well as Salt Lake City, lots are exactly the same. When you look at the lot type, it would be single lot type, block after block after block, but the diversity is created by the architecture. And I think it's very important to introduce some of the standards. Now, the big challenge is the row homes, because, you know, when you look at the site plan, actually predominantly, to get to that kind of density we're looking for, you're dealing with the row homes. That is the reason why, instead of repeating, because, you know, if you do a five-unit building and it repeats, it's not a big deal. You put another building next to it, well, it starts to be, but if it keeps repeating, it's overwhelming. That is the reason why we think creating a composition. And most of the builders, we already talked, you know, production builders, do that kind of production. Create much appealing block phase. On top of that, the code after negotiation requires lot type diversity already. Depending on the block phase length, you need to provide certain amount of lot types. And we're following that with mixing the duplexes and row homes and cottages, which is actually unusual for a new development. You know, you don't have that kind of diversity in many places. Now, again, in terms of the responding to the market, I mean, what I'd like to compare these two options is that, you know, the reason aside, what are the advantages for the community? And what do you gain by each, and what are the risks you're taking? I think the kind of risk you're taking are the same, because there's nothing guaranteeing that plan to be done by a really good developer. It can be sold, and the risk I see there is that if you provide commercial as only ground floors of a mixed use, I've seen a lot of vacancies in those because of the expensive and because it's rental. So those are my two cents, and I'll let Ed talk about the market.
Hello, Commissioner. Ed Axley, President of UBA. This is an interesting thing I've never done this in my career, where we come in and try to go down in density. In fact, we actually, to be honest with you, in 2020, when we came in and originally were proposing this, we fought so hard to get the, the density. Originally, we were, more or less, the max density on this thing was originally approved for 515 units and 69,000 feet of commercial. The, the plan that you see right there actually came down to 496 units. Of that, 427 of them were rental apartments. The reason why we did that in 2021 was because there was, there was a deficit in apartments, I mean, apartment availability in the market, and right now there isn't. There's, there's actually quite a glut of apartments on the market, and there's even more coming on. The other interesting thing was we, you know, the commercial's interesting. There is, there is a glut of commercial on the market right now, roughly 2 million square feet up and down the Wasatch Front, and they're anticipating anywhere from five to seven years for absorption of that before it actually equalizes. And there's this monumental demand for homeownership right now, and that's a little bit different than it was before, but it is now. And there's a lot of things we learned back, you know, from the time when this, when the code was originally adopted in late of 2021 to now, and especially through our COVID period. We learned a lot about what is retail and what is commercial, and what can actually function and what doesn't function. So when we went to this and we came back to go, oh, hey, we've got a really great idea of how we can make this a truly successful community as opposed to a massive apartment complex, we, we produced this, and to, to, not, not to our surprise, but a lot of people actually really fell in love with it, but to our surprise, it was, you know, there was a lot of concern. There was fear over what it could be, or whether it was going to be a successful element or a successful design for what is Lakeside in Lakeside Landing. So let me, let me tell you why I don't believe that this design right here is, is problematic. First off, the big changes are from the old plan, 427 rental apartments to 68, and 68 owner occupied apartment, I mean, units to, we dropped it way down to 46 rental apartments, which is a monumental difference, to 262 owner occupied homes of different kinds. Now granted, yes, a lot of them are row homes or townhomes. The, the, the way it's designed right now, obviously, you can tell that the green space went up monumentally. We went from 150,000 square feet of green space to 250,000 square feet of rental space, I mean, a green space. That's huge. That's a monumental amount. In fact, if you think about what is daybreak and what is successful about it, yes, it is the articulations in architecture, which we already have. That has to be, that's mandated by the code and the, and the design of what this community has. You have to do that no matter what. But a lot of what makes, you know, daybreak charming is its open space, you know, has all these connective corridors and green space, which we have now. We have that as opposed to just parking lots, which I think is wonderful. The other, the other interesting thing is the proposal that we, we have actually provided actually shows 46,000 feet of commercial, not 39, even though that is, that is what's required here. So we are dropping it down, but it's, it's really, it is a decrease by 25,000 feet, but that's really, we're not decreasing the retail side, the walkable main street. We're decreasing the office spaces above it, simply because there's a glut of it on the market right now, and I don't believe that we were simply putting it in there to meet the, that what the city was hoping to have, which was this monumental amount of commercial in there, which we're fearful of failure. In fact, since 2021, the, the financing rate for these type of products has gone to nothing. Like, nobody in the United States is financing this stuff because they've seen it fail. It's, it's failed all over the place. So we're, we're, we've committed to actually putting in the retail walkable space. In fact, we believe it's more walkable than it was before. We have more commercial, actually, that's kind of coming up and going up and down, and we have engagements all the way up through. Now, bear in mind, commercial also extends into the neighboring properties going to the north. We don't have to, that doesn't have to all be carried by us. It should continue all the way up Main Street for the next, you know, half a mile all the way up until it hits Center Street. The other interesting thing about this is occupancy. When you, when you look at this plan right here, which you, and I'm talking about, you know, science and statistics that come out of the Gardner Group and everybody else that's doing research on this in, in Utah right now, and you look at what, what is, you know, how many people are actually occupying apartments versus how many people are occupying houses. If you're looking at, okay, do we have enough people in here to make this a vibrant, successful community? And who are these people? When you look at it, the, the average apartment has 2.51 people in it, persons per unit. And the average house in Springville actually has 3.76 people per unit. So when you do that and you add that up, actually, even though we decreased the density massively, and we don't have, we don't have the 427 apartments and all this kind of stuff, we actually only have, we, we have, we have, we have a total residency base of 1,100 people in this development right here, as opposed to a residential base of 1,326 people. So it is a slight decrease in people. But the interesting thing is, we got almost roughly the same amount of people, but we've cut the number of cars in half. There's only roughly, statistically speaking, 662 cars in the community with, with a massive amount, 35% more green space, and we have the same number of people. Now, children, that's another interesting component of this. If this plan moves forward as opposed to the original one, funny that I fought so desperately to get, and, and, but if you move forward with this one, that's right here, that's being proposed, the number of children actually increases. If you look at what the difference, statistically speaking, in Utah, the difference between how many children are in cottages, townhomes, and row homes compared to apartments, it goes up. We have more children in this community, which is great because we have more common space, we have more open space. The other interesting thing is the diversity of children. If you look at the measurements from K1 through K12, it goes up monumentally. In fact, you have a full spectrum represented in there. In fact, statistically speaking, as of September of last month, the most diverse community is the ownerships of townhomes in the state of Utah right now. We have the most diversity in children across the spectrum. So whereas, whereas predominantly in apartments, actually, the, the number of children that you find in apartments is, is .19 per unit, and it's predominantly kindergarten based. That's it. There's no, there's no children per se besides infants or, or young, young children. So there is this monumental advantage to what I consider a community diversity in here. There's less overall cars, physical cars, even though, even though the number of residents is almost the same. The green space is up, and then on top of it, let's talk about financial advantages to it, if you go with this versus the other. The, the, the financial advantages of this is, and statistically speaking, this is for Gardner Group and others that have done this research over this last year, if you look at the disposable income that's produced per rental dwelling unit versus homeowner dwelling unit, there's differences, right? In fact, on average in Utah, homeownership spends, can spend up to 30% of their annual income on what they consider localized disposable income. They're going to spend their money here in Springville. They're going to go to the stores, they're going to get their haircuts, they're gonna, they're gonna, whatever, buy the services, they're going to do this. Whereas in an apartment, statistically speaking, as of September of last month, it's 20%. But you also look at the average income on here, and, and listen, there's diversity in here. We do have apartments. In fact, we have roughly 15% of the total complex is apartments, so it's not like they're not represented. But the overall income is down dramatically. As of September of last month, the average household income in Utah is 101,000 a year, whereas the average household income in an apartment, that's combined, meaning multiple people are paying for the rent, is $59,800 a year. So when, and they have less money to spend. So when you look at that and you look, okay, how much money are we going to get in Springville? How much money is going to be spent here to promote our local businesses and support the 46,000 feet of commercial that we're going to put in here along Main Street? You're looking at the annual income, the annual disposable income, local disposable income for this community right here, as, as presented on the right, at roughly 6,840,000 annualized. Whereas, whereas on the left-hand side, even though it's much less density, you're looking at an annualized disposable community budget of 8,466,000, 2 million more annualized that can be spent in the community. Now, interestingly, the concept of curtain wall on, on 400 South, we didn't argue that. In fact, that we have on the original plan on, on, on the right-hand side, it's apartment buildings. They're three-story tall, they're limited by the overall height, that's it. They're, they don't get any taller than that. That's, we, we wanted to actually cluster them down and make singular taller buildings, but that's not what we're permitted to do in, in Springville. So the, so the ones that we proposed, now granted, it's, and we can memorialize this or whatever, we proposed three-story townhomes along 400 South. So the residential engagement is, is exactly the same as far as the wall or curtain wall effect that's bringing things in and, and what's functioning there. We actually think, and it's funny, I didn't think I'd find so much resistance coming in asking for a decrease in, in units and more open space and what I believe a more successful commercial base, because I'm only getting rid of the parts that I feel like will be left unoccupied, is, 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 you know, having this, this proposed plan on the left. Now, interestingly, as Corket mentioned, the, the transects allow for conversion anyway. So if Main Street becomes much more robust and becomes much more engaging, just like every commercial center, center in old towns in the United States, the residential products convert. They're allowed to convert without a zone change. They can take those, those, they can take the townhomes and the, the site entrance homes and then convert those to businesses, and we see that. A lot of people do that in towns, and they'll convert their windows into showrooms and everything else. That's if it truly is robust. If it gets really even more robust than that, they can actually take the unit down and go up with something. But it's up to them. It allows them to evolve with the, with the community. Now, the argument can be made, well, we just wait it out. Let's just see what the market will do and whether somebody will buy, you know, buy this or take this on. Well, there are. There are people out there that would take 515 units and pack it full of, you know, apartments and do the commercial as their, as their sacrificial lamb and just get it out there, but they'll have the 515 units placed in here. What we were trying to do is because we're, because we're committed to maintaining the commercial and the, all the center corridor on Main Street, we're trying to create a community that actually is a little bit more vibrant, a little bit more open, a lot more green space, less cars, more money. And that's what, that's, that's the argument we, that, that we're giving. And on top of it, the hardships are, there isn't financing for those larger ones. The only way this can get financed now are with larger national builders. So if it's forced to go to the, the apartment design, you know, 500 units of apartments out there, and, and I hate to scare everybody, but have more of everything out there, it does have to go to a national group, because they're going to have to fund it through a national fund, you know, through a, through a, you know, they're not going to go to, you know, they're not going to go to central bank, they're not going to go to the local banks to get it funded. I mean, ask, ask central bank whether or not they'll fund a mixed-use apartment building right now. They won't. So what we did is we simply took out the mixed-use component, we added homeownership in here. We have diversity of, of people, probably much more so than what's represented before, and as far as the architecture goes, that's already dictated in the pattern book and the code and in face, and face variation on, on, on blocks and in articulation on the buildings. All of that's already there, and we actually, we're the ones that helped created that because I believe in that. I mean, if you guys were here with me when we went through this in the original, I was promoting all of this wonderful walkableness that you find in, you know, Charleston, South Carolina, Savannah, Georgia, Gaithersburg, Maryland, you know, Portland, Maine, you know, and so forth. I actually believe that this does represent that, and it does give the, it does give the community what it's looking for. Less cars, same number of people, more money, greater diversity, more children, and, and I believe a longer, more stabilized product. I think the fear of, of the failure of this, I don't think it's sound in, in current research or in, in actual science right now. I think, I think the fear should be considered, but I think we should look at it optimistically and, and see for, and see what it really is. Is this going to give us the community that we really want? Is this gonna give us the community that we really want? Um, is this gonna give us the, the, you know, the open space that we're hoping for? Is this gonna, you know, decrease our problems? Is this gonna increase our financial benefit? And to all of those, I would say yes. So I, I hope that this will be taken into consideration. I understand, uh, Josh is concerned. Josh actually helped uh, pull this whole project all the way through originally. In fact, interestingly, I don't think that the concept of the apartments was ever popular and they almost created the tran- the T-six transect for me because at the time I was trying to solve a problem at that time, which was, we, we had a deficit of apartments in Utah. Most apartments hadn't been built since the late eighties and early nineties. That has not been the case for the last four years. In fact, we have an overabundance of apartments right now. In fact, Salt Lake is looking at, uh, over a three-year to three-and-a-half-year stabilization period and that's best-case scenario for, for the products out there. And what we, what we knee-jerked did was we stopped building homeownerships opportunities or, you know, opportunity to buy products and we built apartments. Well, in the time that everybody was building apartments, we were in here trying to solve utility issues, trying to get utilities out there. Had we gotten utilities out there earlier, we would have built uh, five hundred apartments out there. But the market's changed. And I mean, listen, I, you know, it's, it's, it is an interesting thing to come in and ask for a deduction in zoning, but that, you know, I've never made the argument of what is actually, you know, what, what's actually better economically for the city and, and what's actually better for family and community, but truly this is a better alternative. And, and, you know, the con- that, you know, this thought of a national builder, I mean, yes, we have been bringing one national builder into kind of court. They're not the only ones we're talking to. There's several ones that we're talking to and there's some of them that are interested in the apartments. They would love to take it and build five hundred apartments. We don't think that that's the right thing. Um, and it's, you know, it's just an interesting concept, but I do believe that this is the, the one on the left is the right approach. I think it provides more money for the, for the city. I think it provides greater diversity of children. I think it provides greater diversity of family. I think it decreases the number of cars. Um, and, uh, and it, 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 it simply takes away the number of structures out there allowing for greater, greater, greater green space. So with that, I'd love to open it up for questions. If you have any questions about the math, I'm happy to show you the math on all of that. I'm really nerdy about that, so.
I got a question for you. So the apartments section, you could do condominiums, right?
Um, we could.
Is that available? So that could be ownership?
It could, except for condominiums don't have the same type of ownership or statistically the same type of response as, as townhomes, cottages and single-family homes. Uh, we could build it out for condos. Um, but it's, you know, the market's moving more towards what you can buy as actually owning the dirt below you and a little bit of the sky above you.
Yeah, I understand. I've done the both sides. That's why I'm asking the, so, but the plan that's, that's identified really, there's nothing in the code and maybe this is a question for both of you. So we've talked about these on your Four South here, that you've got all these, I don't know, they've been called row, whatever. Okay, is there anything requiring that to be built like that or is it just a concept that, um?
No, I'm, to answer that question, I think where you're going is, is there anything that will tell us that we have to build three-story right there? We're happy to. I mean, that's just fine. We had three-story apartments right there anyway. We're happy to go to three-story, to three-story townhomes and actually that provides a whole different product type. Even though technically it's, this is a townhome and that's a townhome, but a three-story townhome is different than a two-story townhome, it's different than a cottage. I mean, I know they're all in the same size, same-sized lot per se, but I mean, let's be for real, the vast majority of our valley is built on the same-sized lot. So you know, you have, you have hundred-foot frontages on, on certain-sized lots and you have products that go from four hundred thousand to four million. I mean, so the lot size doesn't dictate the diversity. It's, it's what's gonna go there. If we, if we commit to doing three-story, in fact, we did, we proposed that, we just haven't memorialized it. We said, hey, what if we go to three-story along Four Hundred South? Not really, and, and actually, I don't know if you want a whole wall of three-story. In fact, if it were me, I would have three-story and two-story kind of coming down it just so it's not looking like, uh, Jer- the walls of Jericho, you know?
Actually, the only requirement is the diversity of lot types. We need to use three different lot types on that frontage. And that's why two-story and three-story and a mixed-use building adds up. I forgot to mention, you know, the additional two pages actually additional because there are substantive standards in the code, architectural standards for both cottages and, uh, row homes. I forgot to mention that. And it's important because, you know, we try to guarantee certain quality from even a production builder. For instance, the builders we talked to showed us some elevations and we said, in this code, you need to provide porches. As soon as they put the porches on their facade, it was a different story. So we're trying to guarantee a level of comfortable, uh, engagement on the sidewalk with the code. So I would really encourage.
So that's in the code?
Yeah.
It is in the code.
I would encourage you to really go through the code before making any decisions on this.
So, 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 yeah, to add, to add a little bit of detail to that, because that's in the code, the products that you're actually seeing out here that are being proposed or designed by multiple large builders are different than everything you've seen anywhere because they have to meet the level of articulations that's defined in the code. And they have to do certain things, like they have to have porches on them and they have to, you know, they, they have to have face diversity and they have to have certain number of articulations. That's all in there. So you're not going to end up with a cookie cutter type thing because I, I think that's, that's an unnecessary fear because it doesn't, the code doesn't allow it. I mean, yes, is there some repetition in there? Yes. I mean, it, it doesn't say that every single unit has to be different going around, but like on a given block, you have to have a certain number of face fronts that are different coming across the block. You have to have certain amounts of articulations. You have to have certain diversities of, you know, other things, you know? Anyway, it's just, it's an interesting thing. I think there's more diversity pre-programmed into this community that we helped author. And we did that because we wanted it to be something amazing. I've been here and forever developing. I plan on being here forever developing. Last thing I wanna do is have something that's seven miles away from my house to have people come and yell at me because it's garbage. I live seven miles away, guys. Like it's.
Yeah, I got you.
Yeah.
So let me ask, just to clarify my question and then maybe other people have a different questions. So if I was to take this, let's say on, and I don't have a way to point to it, but on the, on the left-hand side,
Yes.
you've got that corner, right?
Yes.
Is there anything preventing from doing that application on the existing one with the apartments? That's what we're asking a change for, right?
The biggest difference is, is that on, the one on the left-hand side no longer has a T-six.
Right.
It has a T-five I, a T-five and a T-four. The one on the right-hand side has a T-six, a T-five, a, a T-five I, a T-five and a little bit of T-four. All we did was get, all we did was drop down from the T-six to the T-five because we simply were getting rid of the three-story apartment buildings and allowing us to substitute it with other products. All those other products are already permitted.
Right, but you're, what your goal is, is to say, I wanna get rid of the apartment buildings.
Yes.
So we go from T-five to, uh, T-six to T-five?
Yes.
Because T-five does not allow for apartment buildings.
It doesn't.
It does, it does.
Yeah.
Uh, T-five allows the, the, what we call it, Main Street mixed-use apartment building. I mean, legally, you don't have to follow that. You can put an apartment there. But what we're seeing, the reality of the market and everybody's demand is that, that's very unlikely to happen.
That's what, that's what I'm concerned about. We're being asked to make kind of a judgment call here on things that are on a, it's a moving target, basically. And from my understanding is that we can, there could be lots of different applications, so to show us this is what we, we were proposing, but it could be a lot different.
Well, we, you know, we're happy.
A production builder comes in, but, I'm sorry, I apologize for cutting you.
Oh, yeah, no.
Uh, so a production builder could come in, buy this lot and say, I want to do something totally different. It's still allowed within the code and it would be different than what's being shown today.
One more reason why it's unlikely is the, when you approve the regulating plan, you're approving the alley locations and the depths of the half blocks. Within those, it's really hard to accommodate a large apartment building in the market. So by adopting that particular geometry, actually you're saying that these are gonna be alley-loaded shovel blocks.
Yes, if you, if you adopted the one on the left, there's very few things you can do besides what you see on the left. It gets very difficult to do anything else.
You, you agree, Josh? Sorry, it's, and this is nice because you can both be on a mic. You know, I was apologizing. You have to keep standing up and down, so if it's okay, I'd like to kinda, and then anybody else could have another question, but.
Yeah, to answer that question, it really makes more sense to look back at the, uh, regulating plan than the illustrative plan. Uh, Ed, if you wanna, on that left side, just scroll back up a page.
I'm not smart enough to do that. I'm just old enough to be.
Uh, so the regulating plan controls the locations of those alleys and the location of all those green areas. So it essentially only leaves the dark, the different colors of gray as the buildable lots. So you can only fit the lot types in there that work with that.
Based on the land that's there.
With that geometry, correct. So you do, and that's actually one of, has been one of the struggles with the code in other places that it, it is very, very prescriptive. So yes, adopting this, uh, does give you relative certainty that you're gonna see something close to what is shown in the illustrative plan, at least in how the blocks and the alleys are laid out. They could change the unit types, they could add or remove, or they could add commercial or remove, but the alleys, the greenways, the, everything, that's all defined and controlled by the, by the regulating plan.
That's what I was trying to understand is how that works.
What's that?
So.
You were saying you can't. I, I was, I was saying we can't remove commercial. Commercial has to hit that minimum. So if you adopt this, this plan right here, it actually locks me in. The only thing I could do, I can't remove the commercial. I could put s- less density in than what's designed. That's about it. Because what's there and what, what I can actually geographically or geometrically design, we, we have designed. So the alleyways, the green space, the, you know, the open space, the, you know, the everything, it, it's really difficult to do anything else. The only thing, I could add more green space, you know, I could not put, I could put less units in there. I'm not gonna put less commercial because the minimum is, is based on this measurement right here, is, is the thirty-nine thousand feet. We're proposing forty-six thousand feet. So it's, it's an interesting, it's an interesting thing. I don't think there should be, I didn't even have ever imagined that there'd be fear over this. I saw this as a, as a monumental success to, to everything. I, I see it as a much, a, a bigger success on the commercial because I'm simply getting rid of the, the professional office side of it. Uh, I, I just can't stand to have a building that doesn't get funded and sits vacant on the professional office side for, for however long it's gonna take. And unfortunately, I don't have five to seven years to sit and carry the burden of that, even if it, even if it is the better thing. In fact, you wouldn't want that anyway. There are seasons and ages for communities to, to kind of bloom. If they don't, if they don't kind of happen and bloom, they don't, they never, they never come into their own. They, they don't, they don't evolve very well over time. Once they're there, they can then become more. They can, you know, they can become something else. But you can't have commercials sit vacant forever or it becomes negative. It's no different than the ZCMI building at University Mall. It sat vacant so long that the only thing they could do to change the emotional damage of it was to actually tear the whole building down and rebuild the exact same building in its spot. And that, that's a problem with commercial. You can't, you can't build it and let it sit vacant. It has to thrive almost from day one.
I've got kind of an unusual question, uh, regarding, you quoted a few times the reduction of, uh, cars.
Yes.
Explain that because I've, I've been in these communities in many states that are i- identical where you drive in from the back alley to park in your garage and all of these things, but.
So let me, let me explain you how the, how the math works on that. So when you get into, um, when you get into apartments in Utah, the average apartment unit has two point five one cars per unit. That's pretty average right now. At least that's the latest studies as of last month. Um, the average single-family home in Utah has one point eight one cars. So the difference is, I actually, so here's the big difference. I only have, in this community, I have, um, I have, uh, well, the original one had four hundred and twenty-seven apartments and sixty-eight homes, right? On this one right here, I have two hundred and sixty-two homes and forty-six apartments. So when you, when you do the math on that.
That's the math you're using to calculate.
When you're doing that, you're dropping the number of cars by roughly six hundred cars, but almost maintaining the same number of people. Because the, the big difference in the people are the children. It's the children. You have, and you have a diversity of children that don't drive. Cause you, the, the, you know, you have a diversity of children from K-one through K-twelve.
Is that based?
They do drive, but just not as many.
Is that based off the same incoming statements you were talking about or is that a separate type? You talked about the hundred thousand.
Yeah, a hundred and one thousand. And that, and that's for ta- that's for, and I, I don't wanna over-simplify that. That's for what they would call attached housing ownership, you know? You actually have to be at a hundred and thirty-three thousand household income to buy single-family houses in Utah. So all I was doing, I was taking, I could have taken that number, but that's, that's a, that would have messed it up a little bit. I took the hundred and three because that's much more realistic to what is here.
Is that what the cars is based on?
Yeah, that's what the car is based on. So when you hit a hundred and thirty-three thousand a year, you have,
Changes.
It changes, you have two cars.
Yep.
On every, it's actually, it's, it's still slightly under two cars, but you have two cars. And interestingly, that statistic is dropping, um, on families, not on individuals. So individuals that rent apartments each have a car, you, contrary to what people think, they still have a car. Families, the number of cars are dropping and I don't know why that is. It's a weird, it's a weird statistic. Why do we have less cars in a family? I don't know. Less kids are driving.
Interesting.
Yeah.
They're running the body shop.
Yeah, e-bi- e-bikes, yeah. Yeah, I have a kid that does that all over at the world. So.
Thank you.
You have any questions beyond that?
Uh, the alternative motion, have you studied that? I mean, you, you, both of these motions.
No, so mo- most of these, I, well, obviously I got this, uh, I got these, uh, two days ago, uh, that were proposed. Um, some of this stuff was, was presented to us in generalities, um, and we did kind of talk about it. I, I thought we had kind of addressed these. I didn't realize that we were so far off. Maybe it's because I was, I was like, this is great. This is great. Uh, no, I, I don't. My, uh, you know, um, you know, upper, you know, I, I don't know. I don't know. I, the alternative still wasn't the alternative that I was thinking. I mean, we already have diversity of face fronts in the, the system. I, I almost feel like I'm getting punished for trying to decrease the, the, the density here and yet I believe it's a, I believe it's an overall advantage to the city, both in family diversity and economic, uh, superiority and in, you know, and, you know, and everything. But I, I don't know why I'm getting in trouble for this.
Would any of these four, uh, recommendations create an undue burden on, on your plans?
So Corbett? I was, I was, I don't know if you can tell, I'm so ADD that I was, I mean, about an hour into the presentation, I was antsy. I had to go stretch, so.
Again, you know, we need to understand the lot type concept. If we use the existing twenty-eight lot types here and try to diversify those, that's, yes, undue burden. Because those lot types are not designed. Because I can sit down in two days, I can come up fifty more to provide those di- diversity. No, they, they were def- def-
Designed?
Crafted, designed to enable different building types to do different things. It wasn't a measure for diversity. So that's why I personally, writer of the code, would not use lot type percentages as, uh, diversity requirement. The other part of it is the, the price diversity. I mean, I don't know, that's kind of, I'm, I worked with a lot of communities and, uh, different, uh, we help municipalities to do their zoning as well, revise their zoning. That kind of price imposition is only the restricted affordable housing. I never heard of anything else. That is to say, this amount of percentage needs to be this, uh, That is to say, this amount of percentage needs to be this, address this market, this percentage needs to address this market. I mean, you you may answer that much better, but I think I would agree that, you know, any kind of price imposition would be undue burden.
And that, and you're talking about the s- the single lot type? Not to exceed the thirty-five percent?
There was also a price. Am I wrong? I mean, I don't remember the exact language, but I thought there was a price.
Josh, can you talk to that a little bit?
Yeah, I mean, this really start, I mean, Corbett said that wouldn't be the way he'd do it. For months, we've said, we're concerned about this and it hasn't been addressed, so we just came up with our best shot. If the applicant feels that there's another way to address our concern, because again, I don't want to focus just on the position that we think thirty-five percent is the magic number and six is the right number, and that's the right way to get what we want. What we want is more diversity than we're seeing, and if the applicant has a different way of proposing it, we've been waiting for that. So we'd love, we'd love to have that discussion.
So, Commissioner, I I apologize, but we we did provide it, I felt. We showed that we had, we have forty-six unit apartments in there, which was, and we showed one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom, and their proposed rental rates for those, and then.
Where is that?
I sent it, I shared it.
It's nowhere in this application.
It wasn't, because we we pulled it out under under direction. It was presented, I showed it to you, and I sat with it with, with Troy Fitzgerald about it, and I sat with.
That is correct, but none of that.
Mayor Packard about it.
None of that was ever proffered as regulatory, it was just an example of what what could happen.
Well, I apologize, I offered it as regulatory, and I showed, I showed the different price points, so the argument was that, okay, if you have a, if you have a eighteen-hundred square foot cottage, one-story cottage versus an eighteen-hundred square foot two-story townhome versus a twenty-two-hundred square foot three-story townhome. And I showed that, like, and and the argument was, well, how do you know that the eighteen-hundred square foot cottage is going to sell for more money? It is going to sell for more money than the townhome is, it just is, and I, we we showed examples of that in the market of where those product types are simply selling for more, because that's a single-family eighteen-hundred square foot product. It's a standalone product, has windows all around, there's no stairs. And then you have a two-story that we showed that was, you know, anywhere from, going from fourteen-hundred to eighteen-hundred square foot and and two-story products. And then we have a three-story, and we showed that. And we basically said, we can't guarantee price, we don't know what the price is or what these are gonna come out to, but we can say that we got cottages ranging from fifteen-hundred to eighteen-hundred. We've got two-story townhomes ranging from roughly fifteen-hundred to eighteen-hundred, and we've got three-story townhomes that are going from, you know, twenty-two-hundred square feet and a little bit more. The square footage, the number of stories, and the product diversity creates diversity. And I don't know how to guarantee that anymore without crossing the line of legality, of what I can actually legally do and not get in trouble.
So we're happy to have Ed propose what he just discussed, but currently, none of that is part of what you're considering.
Well, how would it be, like, I'm just trying to propose a couple of things, one, I'm concerned about the fact of, we want diversity, but we can't force it.
We very much can.
Well, I I think, okay, this is just.
Whether we should or not, we have, you have the ability.
Maybe this is my opinion on it. You can always say that this this unit has to sell for a certain value.
That's different.
But the the management of it and the, the, you know, everybody has to sign off on the titles, I've seen that before. And the, just, and and then I had you police it down the road, is that good for thirty years, is this? But by creating some diversity, but it sounds to me like maybe you guys can come back to the commission with kind of a little bit, and maybe we can have a little more working, we've, we've gone through this all the way through, and it sounds to me like maybe you guys could come back together.
Would love to.
And come to, I don't I don't know how you feel about it, it sounds like you're open to that.
No, that's our recommendation.
We we had a table that was on this, we had a table that was on this chart that you're looking at, that was like, that was actually right above it that showed all those product types and their square footage and their estimated sale prices.
So would it be appropriate for us to motion to continue this, and then you guys could come back, or do we need to just vote on this, or how do you?
No, you can make whatever motion you're inclined to make, that was our our alternative motion was to continue.
We need to close this portion before we move, I'm just trying to understand where you're at, and I understand both sides of it, I can see that. But, yeah, okay, that's all I have.
Similar to that, it just was, it had a little bit more diversity, may I, may I come up, I'm also blind.
I can relate.
Yeah, the catch is somehow that actually needs to get into the code, and so however that is best accomplished, we're. We can go do that work.
Well, I have a question. In your zoning ordinance, do you have any pricing requirements? Anywhere?
Anywhere in the city.
Have you seen any zoning code around that has pricing requirements? That's not a zoning code, is for.
But we don't have any other zoning code that allows lot types of this size and this density and.
But we're not proposing pricing.
No, that's, that wasn't one of our recommend, that, we walked away from the recommendation.
Reason why the table was taken out is when, when I proposed it originally, they go, how are you gonna guarantee that these are gonna sell for that price? And I go, I can't. All I can say is that this product is this size, this product has a range of sizes, and this product has a range of sizes. I can't guarantee that they're gonna sell, and I can't guarantee that these three different apartments units are gonna rent for these amount, but I can tell you what I think they're doing today. That's the best I can do, but I can show you that we have fifteen percent apartments, we had twenty percent of these, we had forty percent of that. That's why all of a sudden now, I think we got, we met forty percent, and then somehow they go, no, we don't want anymore, we only want thirty-five percent of this. So, because originally he told us forty, and we dropped it down to forty, and then, and then we had this other product type. So we showed the a diversity of product type, product placement, you know, and and the whole nine yards, we thought, it just.
I I get the sense that we're pretty close, I get the sense that we're really close, I think with what you said, I think a little bit of definition and specificity, I I think we could probably be there really quick.
Okay.
At at least, that's, that's my perception.
Well, maybe we can.
I don't think we're that far off.
Needs to go back and talk, but we probably.
To get the specificity, I think that we're, that we're, we're talking about and making sure that it's aligning with what you're understanding and and it sounds like they're open to regu- uh, suggestions as well, as far as, you know, them putting the thirty-five percent in, maybe you look at it and you say, let's, let's look at it a different way, or let's look at it with a different percentage, and I think maybe come to that.
No, that's exciting, that sounds great, and I apologize, it was me, I did push to come here. Like, I was anxious to come before you and to have this discussion.
Well, you need to move, you need to move the market, we understand that.
Thank you.
So from my perspective, I I see value in both things, okay? I'm torn a little bit because I've got, you know, developer blood in me, but I also live here. You may live seven miles, but I live two, but I used to live seven, so I'm aware of the community, the dynamics. And I can see the value, and this is maybe the time for comment, or if we need to move to a different part, but if you were all commenting on, I I don't wanna see a community that's driven by total economy, because if we were driven by total economy, we would probably have, you know, a Costco right in the middle of town.
Yeah.
Okay? So, economy is a, is a driver of importance, but we also wanna drive for the community that Josh has a vision of too as well, and I think that maybe you guys can go work out something and kind of try to figure it out because depends on where you're at. Yeah, apartment buildings are important, but also is green space, but just maybe trying to figure out a way that when we're done, we all have a product we're proud of.
Yes.
That looks like what we talked about here, here in this, you know, chambers, and that our community, wherever they are, if they're listening or not listening, that they can look at that and say, the process was thought through. Everyone is given a fair opportunity to discuss it, and I think that would be helpful. At least from my point, for my vote, that's what I would want to see is a little bit more, you know, give and take, maybe, so.
Yeah, I would, if you're ready for kind of discussion among the commission, recommend that you move to a public hearing and then bring it back for commission discussion.
That's good.
Uh, we will, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll open a public hearing then, if you come forward, please give us your name and address.
I move we close the public hearing.
Yeah, second that.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So now, any more discussion that we need to have, or anybody wanna make a motion?
I'm good, are you good? I move to continue this so that it can be, maybe a more of a viable plan be presented, and that's, that's my motion, so.
Is there any additional specifics or recommendations or yea or nays on any of, just so we maybe, if we could define the target a little better, it may help us understand when we're ready to come back.
Yeah, I I think, okay, and from my point of view, and I, this is probably, this isn't part of the motion, so I'm not sure that will legit. I think we've got two experts, and really will benefit from the community in the sense of how do we want our community to look, and how do we make that happen? And I think that's what you guys can get together in that continuance, is to come back and say, yeah, we wanna, we wanna make it work. I like the green space, I like the, I like the, those other things, but I also wanna respect the fact that we have staff that also is, you know, got some vision for where we wanna go with with this whole thing. So I think that would be valuable for both of us to have that, you know, perspective.
I like the green space, I like that we are reducing high-density housing. I also respect the fact that you're looking towards what the market is and and that there are some problems out there with apartments, so I, I, given that, you know, if we can work with these guys, we'd hope we could figure out something that would work.
I I move that we, we readdress this when those issues, the four bullet points have been.
I think there's already a motion on the table.
Specifically, there is.
You have a second?
Or either you could, there could be discussion on the motion, or you could amend the motion, or.
You wanna repeat your motion?
I just, I just, my motion was just to continue this. I don't really have, I don't wanna like direct you guys to do anything, so my motion is to continue it, come back to the commission with something that works, and maybe give us, we, maybe we need to do a little bit more homework too so that we can understand where it's at. So my motion is to continue this. That's it, that's my motion.
You have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have one more item. Item number four is Deborah Lamb, on behalf of the Ivan Scoville Living Trust, requests an amendment of the official zoning map for R one slash fifteen to R one slash eight for the property generally located at thirteen fifty-five West Center Street, Springfield, Utah. Sorry you've had to wait so long.
I'm trying to find the X, I don't have my glasses, so, and I'm, yeah, I'm tired. I guess I closed it all. I just need a map. I got closed in the whole process.
I thought I just had it.
That's it?
Yeah.
That's why we're here, right?
You are, she's you for a minute, she's gonna.
She's laying out the groundwork for you. Yep, you are.
You've been here a long time, sorry about that.
All right, so we have a zone map amendment in front of you, this should be fairly simple, not as hard as the last one. Let me get where our, my bearings are, here we go. So the property in question is nine point eight, nine and a half acres approximately. And I need to turn on my parcels and my zoning, sorry. There we go. So. And the parcels, there we go. It's these two little parcels, well, not little, this little parcel and this larger parcel parcel are the two that we're looking at right now. The surrounding green area on your staff report, I said it'd been changed to R one ten on the the graphic, it's actually R one eight. So all of this surrounding property has already been rezoned to R one eight in twenty twenty-two, and our map has not been updated. So, huh, what's that?
Can you take down that?
Close the map layers.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. So what they're requesting is to be rezoned to the R one eight as the adjacent property is, I'll just quickly explain what, this lighter yellow is our R one ten. The darker yellow is the R one eight, I'm gonna zoom out so you can kind of see how they transition. This orangier color is our R two, which allows more dense townhomes, twin homes and whatnot. They all fall within the Westfields overlay. On May two thousand and three, the city council adopted the Westfields overlay community plan. And with that, it kind of shows how they go from less dense and increase the density towards our village center area, which is this pink area. And so in that, with the general plan, they designated this area as medium-density residential, I'm gonna turn on the general plan. So it actually meets, an R one eight zoning actually meets that designation. So, as you can see, the R one eight zoning coincides with that medium-density designation of that yellow. This is the general plan that I just flipped to. So in their request to change the zone, they don't need to change the general plan, wind use, it's in compliance with that. This has been done several times along this corridor, when the initial plan was adopted. The reason why the homeowners retained the R one fifteen, they actually chose it, was because it is our only residential zone that allows animal keeping. And a lot of this, this ta- area was farming community, and they were afraid they were gonna lose their animal rights. And so they were always told that they could come back in and make a request in compliance with the general plan, and that's where we're at today. So, staff does recommend approval of the proposed zone change from the R one fifteen to the R one eight. And I will entertain any questions, because I know I really skimmed over that really fast.
Is it R one ten or R one fifteen, or?
Currently, it's the R one fifteen, and they're requesting to go to the R one eight.
Which is what they're surrounding.
Which is what the, yeah, the surrounding properties all along that fifteen hundred west corridor. They're meant to be, it's also in the Westfields overlay, so they can apply for density bonuses above that when they come in with a development, if they choose.
So is this, is this, this says this area's been rezoned to R one ten.
As I explained when I first began, I said that was a mistake, and it's an R one eight.
I'm trying to catch up to you.
And I'm just trying to hurry so I can go home, because my bedtime was forty-five minutes ago.
These kind people have waited, so we'll, we'll, I just wanna be clear on.
Right, no, absolutely.
Okay, so the R one, it's go, it is once, they were requesting to be rezoned to what the additional, the properties around it are, right?
The R one eight, which complies with the medium-density correlation of the general plan.
That's what I was just trying to clarify, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Now, now it's your turn, you wanna? Are you? Okay. But, yeah, unless you want to, or? Okay, all right, then we need to open a public hearing, so if anyone would like to come forward.
See, sometimes it's an advantage to be the last. Just saying, optimism is a good thing, so. I have moved to close the public hearing.
You have a second? All right, the, all of us in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, um, any discussion?
Don't have any?
Do I hear a motion?
Yes, I move to recommend an amendment to the official zone map on parcels twenty-three hyphen oh thirty-two hyphen oh oh one four and hyphen, or twenty-three hyphen oh thirty-one hyphen oh oh one six from the R one, R, R one fifteen, single-family residential zone to the R one eight. single-family residential zone located in the general area of thirteen fifty-five west and Center Street.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, um.
Thank you for waiting, sorry.
Thank you so much for waiting.
We fell your pain though, really.
Is there anything else we need to discuss? Do I have a motion to close the meeting?
I move to close the meeting.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.